Yeah, I'll see what Paul and Marty say. I'll give you an update in the DM.
Kathy. Kathy!
So, um...
I thought that we were, um, there was just under 1.3 million. And you could have released it all over except for 100,000. You know, I know that there was certainly supposed to be a fiscal feasibility for the whole council, the whole portfolio.
And the master plan...
And the master plan, the master plan was from the first one. Why I think, because they specifically compared the size of it and the amount of money that Friendship Corp. Because if you put it back, you know, they said it was like 12 acres, which is actually roughly what Friendship Corp. is now. So I'm sure that discussion, actually, might be here, so I would like to... The plan...
People like me.
There's not much sense.
Okay.
That includes transportation, innovation.
They're going to use ride chairs and they shove it. There are even some... I got rid of the chair.
Oh!
It's like one thing I have.
Good evening. Call this meeting back to order. All right, so, um, first we have a public hearing resolution on the approval of the 2018-2022 analysis of impediments for the Fair Housing Choice Report, first of one reading.
Good evening, councilors. Madam Mayor, uh... This presentation is about, um, analysis of impediments to fair housing. And as you can see, one of my staff, Tiara Howard, is supposed to be doing this presentation, but her last day was on Friday. She accepted a job offer as a Director of Community Impact for American Health Association in Richmond. So I'm sitting in for her until we hire a new, um, program coordinator. This is about her program. All entitlement communities like the city of Charlottesville are required under the federal regulations, you know, to prepare analysis of impediments to fair housing. And the current analysis of impediments dates back to 2011 and is expiring. And secondly, our consolidated plan for the next three to five years has to be adopted simultaneously or at the same time along with analysis of impediments. So this particular analysis of impediments will begin for this next program year. And it was prepared by a committee of consortium of housing directors under the auspices of Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. And the Planning District Commission, they already adopted this in August of 2018. And they are requesting the city to do the same. So this will guide the monitoring of housing discrimination in the region and including the city of Charlottesville. The region, this particular requirement dates back to the Civil Rights of 1964 as amended. And there are also several other legislation, you know, that mandates localities that are entitlement communities to prepare analysis of impediments to fair housing. The study was a result of the federal laws and regulations that require entitlement communities again to prepare and implement analysis of impediments to fair housing. Potential impediments could arise as a result of practices that result from one of the following seven status that are covered under the provision of the law. They include race, age, sex, religion, disability, familial status, and national origin. This particular study also covers the following impediments: rental affordability, homeownership affordability, regulatory barriers like zoning, subdivision regulations, and what have you, discrimination in renting and homeownership markets, high debt-to-income ratios, economic and racial disparities among schools, and lack of accessible housing, language and cultural barriers, educational barriers, and access to services within the community. The following are some of the highlights of this particular study. The study is designed to update the 2011 analysis of impediments to fair housing. It's designed to provide transparency in terms of complying with federal regulations in city plan review process regarding residential development. It also provides for reduction of affordable housing shortages, public education on fair housing, which is provided by a PHA, role of financial institutions, and cities' fund deposits, maximizes the use of low-income housing tax credit, which the council was discussing earlier this evening, and other available federal housing funds in increasing the supply of affordable housing. It also provides for lead-based paint abatement in low-to-moderating income neighborhoods. There is also a five-year program that guides implementation of this particular study and plan, and that includes several strategies designed to encourage creation of affordable housing and then elimination of housing discrimination in the area. The Consolidated Housing and Community Development Plan that is already prepared outlines objectives of the city of Charlottesville 2018 to 2022 Consolidated Housing and Community Development Plan is also designed to encourage fair housing choices in Charlottesville, including supporting housing development that create equal opportunity and access to fair housing in the city and surrounding area. The city's CDBG on home investment support and encourage fair housing choices, including accessibility and visibility for people with disabilities. There has been several community engagement processes, including an open house that took place at the Thomas Jefferson PDCs. People were provided the opportunity to provide comments. Staff did not receive any comment until, I believe, 4:49 PM on Friday. And Friday was the last day to receive comments. So the comment came pretty late from Legal Aid Center, you know, and that comment was discussed this morning by the Planning Directors Group, you know, for the region. And there are, there are some, some relevant comments in that particular letter, and then we intend to incorporate those recommendations suggested as part of the, this particular plan before we finally send it to the federal government for approval. Staff is asking the city council tonight after the public hearing to vote to approve this with necessary corrections. You can take your questions for a wait after the public hearing.
Did we get a copy of that, the letter from?
Yeah, I have copies of the letters, yeah. It came really late, so by the time we got it from, um, from Thomas Jefferson PDC, it was at the close of business pretty much.
This was sent on Friday?
Yeah. We got it about 4:49 PM. So it had, it had to be discussed by the Housing Directors Group from Charlottesville and the surrounding counties that make up the Planning District Commission. So we had that meeting this morning.
And when does the report do, when do you have to turn in the report by?
To her?
Yes.
It's, it's, uh, we have to turn it sometime in May, but we like a much faster action by the city council.
So will we receive the updated?
Yeah. I'm sure there might be some comments tonight, and then depending on what kind of comments, if it's relevant, staff will incorporate that into, into this particular document.
Okay.
So I'd have a point to clarify then. So the, the Fair Housing Report that was in our packet does not include modifications that respond to the Legal Aid's letter?
No, no, because regardless, there was no time, the 30-day public comment period ended on Friday, 5:00 PM on Friday. So this came in, it was sent to a PDC, which is the lead coordinator for, for this particular plan. And the city's, PDC got it about, I think it was 4:39 PM, and, and then it was sent to us about 4:42 PM, you know. And then the Housing, Housing Directors Group, which is made up of representatives from the counties and then the city of Charlottesville and Alabama County, they met this morning to review the comments. And, and then it was decided that after presentation to the city council or the presentation, we let the council know that we received only comments at the close of the public hearing on Friday.
But I, but according to our staff memo, we are being asked to approve the 2018 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Report, but we haven't seen the final report that reflects the changes.
Yeah, it was, because when the staff report was prepared, council didn't receive this...
And I understand that, so how can we, how can we approve what's before us then tonight?
Yeah, council can take comments, and then we can revise it, and then bring it back to council. But we would like, we would like some kind of a swift, swift action in terms of approval so we can, after comment, the public hearing tonight, we'll look at the minutes and see what kind of comments received. If there are relevant comments that can be incorporated, then we go back and then incorporate those comments along with other comments. Yeah, there are a few recommendations here we think we can incorporate into the plan, then council can take action at the next meeting.
Okay, that makes better, that makes more sense, thank you.
All right. So is there any other questions?
That was my main question.
Okay, so we'll open it up for the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to? Don't have anyone signed up, is there anyone here who would like to speak? No? Okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there, so do we just?
I think, if I may, Madam Mayor, I think considering the council's digesting the information and this correspondence tonight, and the Director of Neighborhood Development has services as well, what you can do is either ask that the final report be on the next consent agenda or as an action item.
So if it's only consent agenda with these modifications, unless we have questions, we can pull it?
Right, we can still pull it.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Is that the appropriate timeline, Mr. Ikey, for now? Two weeks?
Okay. So...
Move on to the next.
Okay. So we don't have to do the motion?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so next we have a public hearing ordinance for the rezone of 918 Nassau Street, Hogwaller Farms, to mixed-use highway corridor, first of two readings.
Mr. Blair, are we treating these next two items concurrently? I'm just trying to understand, could you help set the stage for this?
If, if I could ask the council's indulgence for one second procedurally, yes, the next two items, the rezoning would enable the special use permit if the council approved that. I do want to let the council know that I was contacted this afternoon by the developer, the developer's representative, we had a phone call. I believe there will be a proffer amendment, and I know that the council's already received some, some more, some questions about perhaps having more public engagement. So certainly hear these two tonight and have public hearings on both, but there wouldn't be a vote tonight, and then at the March 18th council meeting, there would need to be another public hearing based on the proffer amendment.
Okay, so in a way we're starting fresh?
Right, right, tonight you'll hear the presentation, and there will be a public hearing, but then if the applicant does offer amended proffers at your March 18th hearing, there will be more chance for another public hearing as well.
And that's when we make motions and act?
That's right.
Okay.
And that doesn't require going back to Planning Commission?
No, that's, that's your prerogative.
Whether we send it back?
Whether you send it back or not.
All right.
I did, one question is, but what's the typical protocol? If there is, I don't know how substantive these changes to the proffer, proffers are, so is there some threshold that when you cross it, it should go back to the Planning Commission?
There's not in your ordinance, that, that's what, it presents a variety of options. I think based on the conversation from this afternoon, it would, it would not be a very substantive proffer amendment, but I don't want to speak, obviously, the applicant, when it's their opportunity, but I think the council can send it back to the Planning Commission if you wish, but it's really for you, you all to evaluate, and you have the option it's really for you all to evaluate and you have the option to send it back or you can in effect hold a public hearing March 18th.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
This, three years on council, this will be the first time that I, that proffers have ever come up in a live way. And I'm very curious about the proprieties here. I'm sure that you're crossing the, you know, everything, but I don't, my understanding was they are always run through staff and that the elected officials don't in a live way.
No, and you would not be, it would be.
Even them being raised here, I don't, like that, that's not, I thought that it's always kind of cooked well ahead of the time that it ever would, we don't weigh in on a, or even are involved with knowing about it.
Sure. No, no, you're absolutely correct. Usually it is, but I believe, and again, the applicant will make their presentation, but they heard feedback from the public. And I think since these proffers were placed in your packet, that they would like to amend these proffers.
And as long as they are the initial?
As long as they're voluntarily doing it, that's up to them.
But is this, is this a proper forum for that to happen?
Yes, they can.
It just hasn't happened before that I, in my time.
Voluntarily say, we'd like to change the proffers we've submitted.
Okay.
And I, just to echo Consulor Signer, it's been my experience that that would be within a Planning Commission meeting. This is very unusual to have the proffer change, changed proffers come directly to us as a council. But it sounds like there's nothing wrong with that, it's just that I can't remember that ever happening.
Right. And let me just, it is in city code, it's in section 3465, and it says that if a mod, after the Planning Commission has been acted upon these proffers, and then they're changed after the Planning Commission or the developer voluntarily amends those proffers, the council has three options. You could decline to consider the modification and just vote on it. You can continue the application to a subsequent meeting date and hold an additional public hearing. Or you can refer it back to the Planning Commission. And that's up to you all as to your prerogative, but I think you have all three options. And again, not wanting to speak for the applicant before they get up here, but I think when you hear what they're proposing, it's my understanding, it's actually going to be a less intense use of the property than what is already proposed.
Okay, I do have one more question about kind of process then. So how is this not undermining the authority of the Planning Commission to make their first, make their judgment over an applicant's proposal? And what would then prevent future applicants from then coming directly to council with their proffers as opposed to going to the Planning Commission first because there's some, I don't know, perception of success that's in one body versus another?
Would you mind before answering that, if we just wait and hear from them?
Okay, all right.
I think maybe once you hear the proposal, it might make a little more sense.
I'm going to see that it's not that big of a deal.
Right.
Okay.
Mayor, City Council, Matt Ophley, City Planner, Neighborhood Development Services. Tonight you're holding public hearings related to rezoning application and S U P application for 918 Nassau Street and surrounding parcels. Justin Schimpf of Schimpf Engineering, who's a landowner, has submitted a rezoning petition for Tax Map 61, parcel 79, 17, 18, 19, and a portion of Tax Map 6179 and address 918 Nassau Street. The rezoning petition proposes a change in zoning from the existing R2 to family residential to highway corridor with proffered development conditions. The proffered development conditions include any structure located on the property shall not exceed 35 feet. The gross floor area of any single commercial use shall not exceed 4,000 square feet. The applicant will speak to this proffer here during their presentation because this is the proffer that they are offering to change. The land use permitted on the subject property are consistent with the uses currently allowed in the highway corridor per section 34796. These include residential uses such as accessory building structures, multifamily dwellings, residential occupancy, home occupation through provisional use, commercial uses by right, accessory building structures and uses, non-residential such as art studio, art workshop, wholesale bakery. I'm not going to list through all these unless council would like. Photo studio, dance studio, greenhouse, nursery, convenience store, grocery store. Through special use permit, farmer's market, parking garage, non-accessory, outdoor park, playground, ball fields, other uses, house of worship, utility lines, all, and then basically prohibits a lot of other uses which can be found in the proffer statement attached to your staff report. Also proffering affordable housing, if the special use permit is approved by city council authorizing development of the subject property as a residential density up to thirty-four, thirty-two dwelling units per acre, the landowner shall allocate 10% of the dwelling units be built on the subject property for rent as affordable dwelling units. These onsite ADUs shall remain affordable for a period of 12 years from the date of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the third onsite ADU. Administration of the onsite ADU shall be conducted according to the following terms. Onsite for rent affordable dwelling units shall be rented at a rate that makes the units affordable to the households having an income of not more than 50% of the area meeting income for the Charlottesville metropolitan area. The landowner shall be responsible for assuring that administration of the onsite ADU shall be conducted in a manner such that books and records will be kept to demonstrate the following. Section eight voucher holders shall have first priority on rents to any available onsite ADU. The owner of each of the onsite ADU shall verify that the household income of the persons to whom the onsite ADUs are rented is not more than 50% of the area meeting income. Upon request, the owner of any onsite ADU shall provide a written report to the zoning administrator accompanied by evidence that the owner's efforts and results in complying with these requirements. The subject property is approximately .8 acres and the land use plan calls for low density residential. The comprehensive, the comprehensive plan specifies density of no greater than 15 units per acre. In addition to the rezoning application, the owner is seeking approval of the S U P for the same parcels with the addition of Tax Map 61, parcel 7916. This parcel is not part of the rezoning application because it is already zoned highway corridor. The S U P application proposes a density of 32 dwelling units per acre per city code 34740. The applicant is proposing a development for a mixed of one and two bedrooms not to exceed 30 dwelling units, split between two three-story apartment buildings. The development is being proposed as an urban farm and will accommodate a 1,200 square foot greenhouse and a 600 square foot retail farm store. Additional parking, farm sheds, and agricultural fields supporting the development are proposed on the adjacent 7.5 acres in the county. On December 11th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing related to the development and took the following action. The commission voted 3-2 to recommend denial of the rezoning application. The commission also voted 3-2 to recommend denial of the S U P application. The Planning Commission also recommended that should city council approve the S U P, considerations should be given to staff's condition with legal clarifications made. After the Planning Commission's meeting, the applicant made adjustments to their S U P materials. These changes were based on information the applicant heard from staff, Planning Commission, and community. These changes have been reviewed by staff and do not alter materially the application. And the changes include changes of the name of the development to 918 Nassau Street, changing the allotment of units to a mix of one and two bedrooms instead of a prescriptive set of numbers. Additional information on the articulation of the building along Nassau Street transect and amassing diagram. Additional information on the grading plan and flood plane. After review of this information, staff in the city's attorney's office made adjustment to the proposed conditions in the S U P. As mentioned earlier in my remarks, this applicant may wish to amend their proffer statement currently under review by city council. The city attorney can offer more guidance on that matter. With that, I'm happy to answer questions. And then the applicant has a presentation prior to the public hearing.
Do we have questions after the presentation?
With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant first presentation.
My name is Justin Schimpf. I am the owner of this property. I'm also an engineer in town. I'm here pretty often. I was here a couple of weeks ago with a project that I was the engineer for and not own. This is my development, we're working on it for several years now, and we'll tell you about it tonight. Start with a quick present, a quick introduction of my team here. I have Nicole Skroh is here, she's land agent attorney, developer in town, she's been helping me with this. Hannah Patrick is a farmer who's going to be working on the farm component of this, has been involved with the local food, well, and really sort of food movement all over the country in ways. And then Kelsey Schlein is an urban planner who works for me as well. They've all been helping this. And then there's also Peter Russell, he's not here, he's my landscape designer, he actually sits in the city tree commission, he's helped us with some of the landscape components of this as well. He's at home with his family tonight. The property location is at 918 Nassau, it's between Lindenlofts and three existing homes on Nassau. And then it backs Albemarle County is the farm portion of it, which is directly behind the property. A little bit of context, you see that Nassau Street basically runs from Lindenlofts straight up to Carlton Views. And then we are down on the Lindenlofts side of that, directly across the street from us is Reeves Park. I know everyone's heard a lot about this because we've had a lot of meetings and community engagement about this. This is the overview. We started in fall of 2017 with submittals that were accepted for review. We had a city planning commission meeting in April of 2018. At that time, it was decided, the planning commission agreed to by us, that without the understanding what was happening with the county parcel, we couldn't move forward with this farm concept and the greenhouse on the city portion. So we put the city portion on hold, we went to the county back in August 1st and September 12th, we received approval unanimously from the board of supervisors on our application. Then we picked back up with the city planning commission and had a public hearing, we had a work session, discussed some of the details as far as uses. And then we made further revisions to our proffers. We had a planning commission public hearing in December 11th, 2018, and then made some further updates to our proffers based on that. And even up to the last few days, we've made some minor tweaks, and I'll talk about those just real briefly while we're on that subject. Is that the original proffer went to planning commission and went on, had a allowance for up to 4,000 square feet of these commercial uses that were limited to art studio, the bakery, the yoga studio, sort of things I imagine being friendly to the neighborhood, maybe eventually going on the first floor of the buildings. We have a neighbor at Casa Alma across the street, they felt concerned about the size of that being too intense. And so we agreed that should the city allow us, we would cut our proffer to 2,000 square feet to alleviate the concerns they had. That's the one. The other one, I think, is simply a correction that we had churches that can allow to use, but they were not restricted as a size. It was intended they be restricted to 4,000 square feet. The proffer didn't get worked out quite that way. So the correction of that is to say it's 4,000 square feet maximum for church included. We have had a very extensive dialogue with our neighbors. We started off with our neighborhood meeting to B C and A. We went through several more meetings. We actually had some neighbors question us about the soil conditions, if it was safe to farm. So we had testing done, found that was sufficient. We've had meetings with those same neighbors about the flood plain issues, questions they have, and we've talked about that. We've offered to meet at our office, we've had several meetings there. We've met further with the Charlene Green, who's in Human Rights. We've also talked to, door to door, to the neighbors on that street, that whole neighborhood. And then most recently, we had a neighborhood meeting at Sunrise Park, which is where the concern about the proffer and the square footage of the commercial came up. And that was the origin of that change, was that community meeting we had that time. This is our site plan, indicates the, shows the overall development. I think some of you have seen this before, but just to refresh, we have on the far left, top left, the residential units, Country Store, part of the application tonight. And then down to the very far right side, if I'm looking at it, is the owner occupied affordable housing, that's Habitat and Thomas Jefferson Land Trust that are building those. And we have some units that would be by right developed left in between. That's the overall layout of the farm. I'm going to pause for a moment before we go into that. I want to bring up Hannah Patrick, who will be operating the farm portion of this, and let her speak for a few minutes about this, what her vision is for this. Go ahead.
My name's Hannah Patrick. I've been a resident of Charlottesville on and off since 2011. Since graduating from UVA, I've been working on multiple farms and food-related nonprofits, both here in Charlottesville and also in North Carolina and Denver. I'm very passionate about farming and I'm also very broke. I don't own land and sometimes I don't think I'll ever be able to afford to. I think that's a situation a lot of people in Charlottesville can relate to, and it's one of the reasons I think this project could be so beneficial to the community. I'm excited about this urban farm because I think a lot of people in this town would like to grow their own food, maybe turn it into a business, or just grow food for themselves and their neighbors. Like many other members of this community, I'm a renter. I used to live on Reeves Street and now I live on Bowling, and neither of these apartments had room for a garden. Even a landlord would not be minimal to gardening in their grass. When Justin told me he had a piece of land he wanted to make into an urban farm, I jumped at the chance to be involved. I've worked on farms and loved it, but realized that I would probably never save enough money to start my own farm. On the flip side, you hear a lot of people quitting their jobs in the city to go start a farm, investing all their savings into it, and ultimately failing because they don't know the first thing about farming. They've spent their lives in an office trying to save enough money to farm. I think there's a gap here of knowledge versus resources that we have this opportunity to fill. We envision this urban farm as a hybrid of community garden plots available to rent and an educational space for workshops pertaining to gardening, farming, or starting a farm business. I think the community gardens available for rent in Charlottesville are such a great resource to people like myself because it gives us an affordable way to access land for growing without HOA rules or landlords to appease, where we can learn to grow food while also working jobs in the city. They also provide a community from which to learn and share ideas, pass successes and failures. At this urban farm, people can experience a small taste of what it might take to start a farm business, or just to learn to grow their own food without a huge financial investment. In addition to providing access to land and food, we want to make this farm an educational space, a resource for the entire community. The workshops would be open to everyone, not just those renting plots. We see a lot of opportunities to partner with other organizations in Charlottesville for these workshops, drawing from the knowledge of existing organizations, work to educate people about the importance of native plants, organic farming methods, medicinal plants, composting, there's so much more. This rezoning, which would allow the integration of a farm store and greenhouse into the urban farm, would really strengthen our vision for growing future farmers and gardeners and making healthy food accessible in the community. Most farmers who are going to specialize in annual crop production will need to know how and when to start seeds in a greenhouse or high tunnel. Furthermore, with the effects of climate change becoming increasingly a concern, having a greenhouse might soon become essential for year-round cash crop production on small farms. A farm store would also bring produce to an area of the city where fresh, healthy food is very difficult to access without a car. There are similar markets across the country selling produce on a sliding scale and accepting EBT and SNAP dollars, and we'd like to do something similar here. In Charlottesville, we are lucky to have a lot of great organizations working in the food justice. food justice movement, and I think the addition of these resources, made possible by a vote to rezone, would open up a great range of possibilities for collaborating to strengthen our local food system. We're a community that cares about our quality of life, our access to healthy food, and opportunities for empowering ourselves and others. I think this opportunity to have a fresh food market and greenhouse inside the city limits directly aligns with those values, and we'd all miss out if we passed up that opportunity. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Hannah. So I wanted, I wanted you all to hear that. We've been working on these ideas, and I, that's part of the, all the work upon us, the highway commercial, the greenhouse, and all the effort that it's been, I think really has a very worthy outcome. So it's been a hard endeavor. It's been convoluted, but I feel really good about doing it, and that's why we're here. I want to touch to one more piece of this, because it came up in some of the discussions we've had about the architecture. We had previously not had a, a specific architectural design, sort of block, and I think discussions with Ms. Galvin thought that that was an important component of this. So we've developed elevations, and I also have some perspectives I'll show you, and we are happy to have these introduced as conditions of the special use permit, so folks have an idea of what this will look like. There's a rendering showing the view from Nassau Street, gives you an idea of the scale of the buildings. And then I've got, we've introduced porches to these that front out on the street. We are installing a landscaped strip, street trees, and a sidewalk, and the doors have all been brought out to the street, so it really speaks to more of a townhouse than a apartment building. There's just a backup of that same view. You know, I think the other last point I'd make, this has been, I'd say it's been a very challenging process, and I believe in it fully. I have bought this property for the farm. This is our path. We rezoned it from industrial to rural agriculture, because we had to in the county. We can't grow vegetables in light industrial land. And at the end of the day, we have enough acreage in the R2 to build five duplexes, two unit duplexes. It could be four bedrooms each. It would be 40 bedrooms, and we're asking for 42, basically. So the overall quantity of people that could be here is not greatly different from what is by right. The form of this is certainly different than what we do if it were an R2, but I think this is a better form, and I think this sort of housing is better for the folks who are there, and integrating the farm into that is better for the community as a whole. So that's why we're here. We want to get this going, but we need your support. And I hope we have it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I guess I have one question on, and I, so you're, the farming concept has been kind of a focal point for your two years of planning on this project. And, and I was just recounting that some of the phrases that Ms. Patrick was using that we'd like, we hope, we think, there are possibilities. But I've not, I don't see any letter from any other partner, like the UACC or the Food Justice Network, any of the community partners that have been involved in the, in the food justice space, or the community garden space, that, that are in partnership with you. And I, and it just raises some questions for me about the viability and credibility of, of this venture, when I don't see evidence of other community partners really, really joining in with you on this farming effort. So any insights on that?
Well, we have met with all those folks, and we've exchanged communication very recently with them. And I think our, my hesitancy to get people, you know, in excited, because I felt like if I didn't have the zoning for the greenhouse, and I had the farm store, it wasn't going to really be the vision that I have. And yeah, we are using words like, you know, potential and things like this, and this is not a unproven model. This exists, as Hannah said. There are places where she's worked, where they had the food production, the sliding scale. So this is not a, it doesn't happen. I, I feel strongly it can happen. I'd say I've invested the money in the land, I rezoned the county portion, and really at this project, this process I've been through, it's been so difficult, has been largely about having to zone it to highway commercial. That, that's a, a challenge, and we had to do it to get the greenhouse. But I'm very serious about this, and we have, we will absolutely continue to engage with those community partners, but we want to know what we can offer them before making commitments.
So again, the rezoning to the highway commercial was to get the greenhouse. It also allowed you to go to a much higher dwelling unit per acre than
Yes.
Currently allowed and currently in the, in the future land use map.
Right. As our development is, it's two more bedrooms, it would be, right? So it depends on your county of bedrooms or units. Yeah, it is a higher dwelling unit. I suspect the square footage is overall very similar to what you would have if you built the duplexes here. These are 600 square foot, one bedrooms, and about 800 square foot, two bedrooms. They're compact units. So the size, the structure, I think, are the same, just we have more kitchens, basically, rather than having a larger structure with one kitchen, three or four bedrooms.
I don't, the letter you sent this afternoon, it only addressed, I think, the concerns maybe that one of the other planning commission members had.
The, yes, the email I sent out this afternoon was just, it was a clarification about the, how the vote went.
Yeah.
That was Leandro, who I, who we had sat through many meetings with, I felt like supported the project, and I brought forward a revised conditions, suggestions for them to review, and he felt that was basically the wrong time to do it. And I think that I've learned with the staff working on this, and since that moment in time, we have gotten ahead of these things. But at that particular time, I saw a staff report come out, that already we're in the staff report, and I was just told to bring them forward for debate, which is fine, but I do think it's preferable for staff to review first. In the case of the changes we've made more recently, the staff, the city attorney, has been reviewing those things, working with us, and then getting them forward to you. So I, my point in that was that, the vote of the planning commission, I can't, again, I can't say how he would have voted, but the reason he changed, or he was against it, was a procedural one, not necessarily a
But we still don't know how they would have voted.
Right, no. I can't, I can't say that for sure. Nobody told me afterwards, and I wanted to communicate that, because I asked him specifically why he voted that way.
All right. Thank you. So you want to open?
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions just about the, the farm part. So the, I am very intrigued by what you're talking about here and envisioning in the presentation we heard, but I have question, I mean, I have questions also about the implementation. Where, my wife is from Lexington, Massachusetts, where there's something called Wilson Farm, which is very, has been around for a long time, and it's very successful, and they've got, it's, it's a whole bunch of acres. And Lexington is about the size of Charlottesville. I think it's about 50,000 Massachusetts. And, but it's been around for like 100 years. I mean, you know, I, I met, there's a, I'm curious about the business plan for this vision that you have of the nonprofit to succeed, you know, to, to meet its balance sheet and to have, you know, what, what's happening with these plots? Is it a CSA? I mean, is it, is it selling, is it growing its own product, produce that is being consumed by the community? And then I understand there's, there's leases. It, it sounds like a lot of things at, at once, and it sounds very promising and exciting. I mean, I think that having this succeed within the, within the Charlottesville right over the border would be really cool for the community as we get more dense. That sounds terrific, but I am, I guess what I'm looking for is more signs that this will work absent a business plan, or, you know, like a, a plan for a nonprofit, which typically you would, I, I would look at something, and I'd, and I'd see what's the five-year plan for this thing to, to work based on other models. And can you just talk a little bit more about what's to
Sure.
For us to know that it will succeed as a nonprofit business?
Sure. I'll, I'll chime in. I advantage in Hannah maybe want to put in some of her thoughts too, because she's worked on some of these operations. But one of the, one of the revenue streams, the nonprofit, could be the leasing of the, the farm spot. So I'm going to donate the land, the lease, to the nonprofit, so there'll be no cost in that. And then they'll be able to lease around, lease back to people, small plots that they can use. If they're residents of apartments, they can use that. So that'll help raise money, the nonprofit. And there's also an element of classes and describe whether, some other
Do, do these, and it sounds really promising, it does, but is there any, is any of this written down in a, in a plan anywhere? And, and, and it could be. So is it?
I don't know. I would say it's not, it's not a full, long business plan. It's just kind of our, it was my idea a couple of years ago, this is the right thing to do this property. And we've been developing as we go along. I probably met Hannah, got into this six months ago, something like that, is like the, I was looking for a person to jump on this and engage us and be excited about this, and that's her. And so, no, we don't have a particular structure that we know that the property comes to them at no cost, and we know there's a demand for these community gardens, and I believe that the, you know, people who live here will want some of that, and they'll be able to help contribute to that. And then there's also the educational component, where there's a lot of opportunities to raise money through teaching classes, education about
And we'd have no business asking about this if it were not an SUP application, when this is, when, when we have a more vested interest in caring about whether this would succeed or not. But now, you know, here you are, so it, okay.
What I'd say is that I'm very much open to engaging with other community activists in this area, and would like to work with them towards, you know, getting their advice on what they thought would work. We held off on that because we didn't know what we had, and I regret that now because I realize that maybe we could have come to you with, you know, with that proof. To me, it seemed premature to go offering other organizations this type of collaboration when we didn't quite know yet if we would have a greenhouse, if we would have a farm store. So with what we do have, we will still collaborate with other organizations, and then we're going to try to do, we're going to have community garden plots there, no matter if we get approved for a greenhouse or a farm store or not. But I think there are just so many more opportunities for this to be a successful nonprofit with collaboration from the community, if there is also a greenhouse and also a farm store.
So, hey, good evening. I have a question in regards to the affordable housing piece. Do you mind, Mike's acting a little weird tonight. Do you mind expounding on that or breaking it down?
So what, what we have proffered, so in the special use permit world, we still trip that, the square footage, right? But because it's a rezoning, we can proffer affordable housing, we have. And so we proffered was three units at 50% AMI. We had talked about doing 80%. The planning commission told me they would never, no one ever gave us a number of what's, you know, the right number. But they said, well, look, you know, try to get into a deeper affordability, go as much as you can. Basically, I worked through what that could be and said, okay, well, I can do three at 50%. People aren't doing 50% AMI generally, so I thought that was just something to add to table, written table here.
Extra from your regards.
Yeah.
How many units in total?
It would be three affordable out of the 30 in total.
Gotcha. Ask the other question.
All right. So we'll open the public hearing for this. Item three and four, so the rezone of 918 Nassau Street and the special use permit, both of them, right, we had a public hearing. So is there anyone who would wish to speak?
I'm Dave Rinning, and I'm from Eco Village, Charlottesville, 480 Rial Road East. And I've been talking with Justin about this project for quite a while. I happen to be the principal of the Healthy Food Coalition, which is a 501(c)(3). We've been in business for eight years, I think. I'm also a gleaner with Food Not Bombs, and I glean farmers market every Saturday. So we, we've been chatting about it, but as he's told you, he's, he doesn't want to, we don't want to get everybody excited about it, because the fact of it is, until it becomes a real project, you don't want to have people, you know, all wound up and ready to go. I'm part of UACC also, I'm on the advisory committee for UACC. So in effect, you know, he has been talking about this for a period of time, but I, I agree that until it becomes a live thing, we can't really talk to people about, you know, how the business plan's going to look and that type of thing. So that's a, I think, an important thing. We're trying to do the same thing out at the Eco Village, and it's a, you know, we, we want to have a farm store, we want to have, you know, a, a way of selling at the farmers' market and that type of thing. So we're working with, with that as an issue. So just, I think another thing is, we have to get more not affordable units, because the developers are, as I watch this happen, as part of Eco Village Charlottesville, I watch it happen where the developers are doing the best they can with affordable housing. But we have a level above that, which is workforce housing. We don't have enough workforce housing in the city, and I, I don't know that we can do much about it out at Eco Village. We can do four units, six units, something at the most, because the fact of it is that you, you have to, it's a, you have a business model. So in effect, even though it's not affordable housing, it's housing where people will live in apartments, and it's the next level up from people who have affordable housing. It's a law of supply and demand. We need a lot more apartments in town to, to fit that workforce housing group. That's critical.
So low affordable housing would include workforce housing automatically if developers were thinking about. We wouldn't be in the crisis that we were in. It's not just people at the lowest income levels. We are in this crisis because developers have excluded even our teachers, police officers, firefighters. So that definition needed to have been included, including the individuals at those income brackets in the first place. So for
But that's not affordable housing according to your rules.
No. Affordable housing, that's one of the conversations we've been having about fully defining it.
You're right. I think, I think it has to be absolutely fully defined.
Yes, but it still should have been understood that people in those income brackets cannot afford the market rate units in this area, and that's not just talking about the lowest income
I don't disagree with that, but that's a law of supply and demand. You have a large supply, or you have a large demand. If you have a large, larger demand than you have supply, and that's what we have here, then in effect, people can't afford it, because the, the price of the units is higher. Now, if you allow a lot more development to go on, then of course you have a larger supply, and you're
So there was a lot of development happening for a long time, and it still excluded those, so that's faulty thinking.
Well, I, I'm sorry, that's the way America works.
And that hasn't been working.
Well, but how, how are you going to fix it?
Okay, not going on the definition that you are attempting to present to us.
Well, if I'm, if I'm selling candy bars, and I have four candy bars.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mark Cavett. I had a prepared statement that I was going to read, but I'm going to pretty much chuck that, and I'll say to the applicant right now, I'm willing to meet with you all, and if you can convince me that my concerns are safe and I get verified by independent person, I'm willing to support the, what you all want to do, let you know that. I am, as I said, I do have some concerns. This was out there. I don't know if you all ever saw it, but this is the review that was done by the Army Corps of Engineer back in '71, and I'm going to loan it to you all, and and it has a lot of information about, they did a study back in '71 on the Morse Creek, and basically their information that came up was, was that they want the, it was done on the request of the city and the county, and the purpose of the report was to guide zoning and development. That was the crutch of everything. Also want to point something else out that was in the report, was that sooner or later, a rare event will occur in any given year that will be worse than Camille, and I want to hand these out, these you all can keep. We had this on next door for quite some time, and but I just want to point this out. When Camille came, this is where the water level went to on the stockyard. What they're saying in the report was that if the conditions are right there, correct, that the water could have gone What they're saying in the report was that if the conditions are right there, correct, that the water could have gone up to the tide. And if there's probably a, uh, one percent chance per year of a storm that would be that great, they could do that. Whatever happened, maybe next week, maybe a hundred years from now. You never know. I'll lend this you all, but, uh, PBS did a, uh, series, uh, in the fall on sinking cities, what it was called, but it has a lot of good information on, uh, what we're facing as a world, also has good information on urban flooding. This is something that you all can have. And it was some of the information that some of the others that could not be here tonight were going to read. This is from Kimber Hawkeley, who could not be here tonight. And this is from Bill Emery, who was a former, uh, member of the, uh, Board Planning Commission. An idea that he had concerning the area. Final thing I would say is that you can engineer something to count what you think is gonna be, uh, to take care of the water that may be in this area. But mother nature cannot always be controlled.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, Brandon Collins. Uh, I live in the Will and Mills neighborhood. Um, I'm speaking for myself, not an organization. I was just hoping for some clarification on the affordable housing piece of this. Uh, it sounds like three of thirty units would be, uh, deemed affordable, uh, and that's under your SUP laws. And it's, you know, the way the law is written is not great, uh, but it, it does kinda give it to the developer to try to figure out what they can do. And what you're hearing is, uh, this developer wants to provide a, a deeper subsidy, um, which is a good thing. My question was, and maybe you can clarify, 'cause I heard during the presentation from the city planner that, uh, the way they're gonna meet that affordability is by simply saying, we're gonna take section eight vouchers for these three units. Which essentially is market rate housing, and then having HUD cover the difference. It's an okay deal for the resident, right, 'cause it's still income-based, you can get a low subsidy. But the, uh, the developer, the owner, uh, the person who, the landlord who's collecting the rent, really isn't seeing any loss. And I think, uh, that's something to consider. It's kind of a shell game, and I, I think that's up to y'all. I don't know if your SUP process, uh, if, if it's really geared towards that. I mean, certainly you want, uh, them to provide housing to as many people as they want, but there's nothing that says all of their rentals couldn't be up for, uh, HCV voucher, right? If you've got a section eight voucher, uh, that you should be able to access any one of those apartments. And it's not really meeting the, the, the idea of the SUP, which is that the developer's going to provide this to the community as a community benefit. So maybe some clarity on that would be super awesome. Thank you. Uh, it sounds like a great idea, uh, if you can get some good affordable housing out of it, it'd be awesome.
I don't know the answer all to the voucher, but I do understood that this does not tripping the requirement for affordability units. Is that what I understood, the number of units?
That was the road I'm reading.
It did, but the requirement is the five percent per the ordinance.
Can I speak this real quick, just as my question was mine? Thank you. Um, one thing, so our fifty percent units mean, that's what the, if someone was on a voucher, they would pay only the fifty percent. So for example, um, that rent is, I don't know, six or seven dollars a month. The voucher doesn't pay at the market rate. I receive the, the fifty percent rate. And so basically, if someone's on a voucher, that would save the system money. So I am subsidizing that difference, the fifty. I would take, uh, any unit, I welcome people on vouchers. Affordable housing, the principle of it is that if somebody didn't have a voucher, for example, they would be able to pay the fifty percent rate, and that's all I would receive. If somebody had a voucher, they might pay the twenty percent, and the voucher would fill up to say the next a thirty percent. But that would be less than if the voucher paid the whole amount. And I think there was a discussion with the planning commission, I think, about making sure that the folks on vouchers had priority to the units that were affordable. But that's not to say that we wouldn't accept them everywhere, and it also is not to say that we're getting off a market rate, and their fifty percent is what I receive.
And the twelve years, how did you arrive at that?
That was just working through what we could do before I need to start paying people back for this. So I have to go to investors and banks, and at some point in time, I think you'll see most of these are set up where they have a cap of years on them. Even the tax credit ones, I think, go over thirty years, maybe with those programs. And it's the standard, the standard SUP is ten years, I think. So that's sort of in the model, that's as much as we can afford to throw forward, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Walker. Good evening, Council. Uh, my name's Ashton Gilmore, and I am a resident of Nassau Street. Uh, about a hundred yards away from where this development is actually gonna be built, or where it's being proposed to be built. Um, my wife and I have had many conversations with the developer, with people in the community. We've gone to these informal meetings, we've gone to the more formal meetings. And not to bury the lead, we would like to say that we would be in favor of that. I should just speak for myself, apologies, but I am in favor of the proposed development. And I'd like to be kind of summary with what I'm, for the reasons that I, that I would be in favor of it, uh, I have three. And I'll kind of defer on the first one, uh, with the affordable housing. I think I will completely defer to people who know way more about that than I do. The second are the floodplain concerns, which, um, are not that much of a concern for me. Not to say that flood zones are not an issue, uh, but when we bought our house two years ago over on Nassau Street, we actually got a letter from the city engineer, uh, Hugh Blake, which said that as a result of LOMAR sixteen dash oh three dash twelve oh seven P, our property, which like I said is about a hundred yards from this, is not in the one percent floodplain. But the planning commission was under the impression, based on FEMA maps, that the area still was. Uh, the problem with that is, is that the FEMA data and the map that they were physically looking at hadn't been updated as a result of this. But as I said, the civil engineer for the city took a look at the information that was available based on that LOMAR, and he even said, our property's not in there. So hearing a lot of concerns about the floodplain issue, I, I don't share them personally, so it's not a big concern for me. The biggest reason that I do wanna say, uh, that I'm in favor of this is, uh, it's an improvement of the community. It's an improvement of the neighborhood. Uh, if you drive along Nassau Street, as of like three or four weeks ago, uh, the road and the side of the road that is in question here was really just kinda used as the dumping ground for people to throw stuff out their windows. Uh, there's garbage everywhere, uh, there are gas cans everywhere, there's trash, I mean, just people, and it was kind of a vacant area. So nobody really felt any need to take care of it. Uh, with what's being proposed along here, and the houses that are being owned for habitat for humanity, it's already improved the area. They've cleared a bunch of trees. Me and neighbors have talked about it, that it's the cleanest we've seen it in the past several years. And when you put in these types of housings, and when you put in this type of, these types of properties, people take ownership of the area. People take ownership of the neighborhood. The farm seems actually like a great idea. I think it's, the classes that are being offered are something that I would definitely take part of. I think this would overall improve the neighborhood. And when we talk about the comprehensive plan, if I could finish my sentence, uh, one of the things that I have seen in it is that we wanna create walkable communities. That's basically what's being proposed here. Uh, it's not in the city, like heartland of the city, but it's definitely something that I think would improve the neighborhood, and I really urge you all to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
My name's David Katz. I live in Belmont. Uh, my previous testimony, uh, or comments at the planning commission are in the record concerning the amount of flooding that historically has occurred in this area. And, um, if you look at the one, one percent flood, floodplain over the course of a hundred years, one percent per, per year would mean that there's a twenty-six percent chance in any particular year or through the, through, through the time period of a thirty-year mortgage of there being a flood. One in four chance that someone is buying one of these properties that during the lifetime of a conventional mortgage, they would have flooding occurring. The other, uh, issue that I have is about the redrawing of the FEMA maps. Uh, my first job out of school was with an architect engineering firm doing environmental consulting. We came across instances many times where the science was not black or white. There was a lot of gray. And it was our obligation to take the side of our client and shade the issue when we did these environmental studies. I think that the redrawing of the FEMA maps being done by the developer is the wrong way of doing things. That a neutral third party should have been hired to look at the data and impartially draw, redraw the maps. I really think that while you have a nice rendering here, I think that, um, putting any housing, any development into a, into a floodplain is foolhardy. And you talk about having affordable housing. The affordability also depends on their being able to obtain insurance for the property. If it's flood, if it's, um, flood insurance, there's a higher cost for that. And if it, if they say that it doesn't qualify and the data are correct, they're gonna flood out, and they won't be compensated for the damage. So I think that putting any development of any kind into a floodplain is a mistake that the city should not make. Thank you.
Tell me occupation.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? No? All right.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Karen Katz. I live in, uh, Belmont, and I think that, um, what is concerning among, among many things is that Alamooral County declined to approve housing on that property. They did approve a farm. And, um, and the only access to that farm is from city property. So that means that the city will be responsible for maintaining the infrastructure to have access in and out of that farm. And so in the event that there is flooding, these will be city streets that we will be responsible for. And I simply think, oh, and there's another point. Uh, back in October, we met with the, um, applicant, and we talked about the fact that there were questions about the soil and the water. And we asked, you know, it would be simple, just put a dipstick in and see what the water, check the water quality, check the soil quality. Apparently, the soil quality was checked. We never heard about the water quality. And, um, I think that there is simply a risk reward factor here. And I know that we need housing units, and I totally understand Mr. Gilmore's, uh, position that this looks a lot nicer than what he's looking at now. I totally understand that. But all across the country and across the world, we are finding out about the dangers of building in or adjacent to floodplains. It's just foolhardy, and I think it's a huge risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, we're gonna close public hearing.
Just wanna clarify, these, these lots exist and are gonna be built on, I guess, there's, there's development can happen on these lots. There's nothing preventing them from building on these lots by right.
In the current zoning, when you're talking just purely the zoning, yes, that is correct. Right now at R two, they can build on these lots.
I do have a point of clarification because there's something the applicant said, that the existing R two zoning would not be providing that much more units than the rezoning to the highway commercial. And I'm wondering why would you go through the rigmarole of a two-year rezoning process? Um, because as far as I can see, there's a major increase in, in density that you're allowed with highway commercial compared to R two. And you're allowed different building types going from a multifamily instead of a one or a two family.
So, um, I think what I said was that, um, as by bedrooms go, right, you can do four bedrooms per unit, we can do fi- or, uh, ten total units, uh, five duplexes. That's forty bedrooms worth of, that would be allowed by right, basically. Uh, I don't like the form of that, and I also, again, when I saw this, the opportunity to me was to do a cool urban farm.
But just to compare apples to apples, if I may, so there's ten units with the R two, there's thirty units with the highway commercial.
There are more units, yes, I can see that.
That's all I really wanted to clarify.
Thank you. So are you all, um, colleagues opposed to this going back before the planning commission?
Excuse me, I personally would like for us to, um, make a decision. But that's just my personal opinion. I, I like the plan.
I have serious problems with the, with the application, so I don't know, we talk about it tonight or we talk about it later.
Would, would you want it to go back to the planning commission? Let's go.
That would be, I, I don't think that that would make too much of a difference.
Okay.
Well, is there a motion for it?
No, we don't make a motion.
And if, if I could, just to clarify your question earlier, and I wanted you to hear the developer, the only, like they stated, they got a comment on Friday, our office was contacted today about this, and the only change is really to cut down the square footage for commercial use from four thousand to two thousand square feet.
And yet, they kept the, the land use on the land use matrix, i.e. church, that still required four thousand. So why wasn't that made to-
Well, that was before the planning, those were the proffers that were approved, and the developer is now also offering to cut that to four thousand square feet. Right now, the way those proffers, the way the proffers were, are currently worded, the church can be larger than four thousand square feet.
Oh, okay. Um, Mayor Walker, I don't mind sharing some of my concerns about this, if, if anybody minds. And I think, um, when we rezone, and this is not only an SUP, the SUP, the special use permit, is in a, is in a table associated with existing zoning that the public can go and see. This is a rezoning that is coming from an individual property owner. And so I look at this differently in the sense that it needs to be really scrutinized. And the big rule of thumb that's followed by the American Planning Association, um, anybody in this, in this realm is that you rezone to your comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is the vision of the community. If you don't follow your comprehensive plan, then you are slowly but surely changing the future shape of your city, one rezoning and one SUP at a time. That's not a holistic vision, and it's not usually a healthy way to do, to chart your future of your city. So when you look at the comprehensive plan, the twenty thirteen land use plan, the future land use plan, this area is low-density residential. It's R one and R two. It's R1 and R2. And it is very much still in a flood plain. It also is supposed to be that when you go to a rezoning, when you change the rezoning, that new zoning designation is supposed to act, feel, smell like that which you are changing the zoning to. That's in our standards of review. This is being, and R2 being rezoned to a highway corridor commercial. The way the highway corridor commercial district is defined is a district is to provide for intense commercial development with very little limited residential use. It is intended for where the most intense commercial development in Charlottesville occurs. In this case, it's an inversion of this land use designation. It's being used to put more residential use in an area that in our comprehensive plan says is supposed to be low-density residential. So what I'm concerned about is that we've created a situation where it's not a transparent process and that it's a two-step process that's pretty arcane to get from one zoning designation to another that undermines an ordinance that then is supposed to be implementing the community's vision. So we are so far removed from the community's vision that it's very, very disturbing to me, that we would be breaking apart our process so thoroughly in order to make this happen. And I, and Councilor Signer and Councilor Bellamy, I don't know if you remember, but we didn't approve the rezoning on property on Booker Street from R1S to B2 for the very reason that it didn't comport with our comprehensive plan. So now we're being asked to change an R2 to a highway commercial in an area that is questionable at best about whether or not it can sustain it in a flood plain area. And so in a sense, to me, we're short-circuiting a process and that's a breach of trust of our con-plan, of our zoning ordinance, and of the resonance on this street. So I just, I don't see how this is any different than how we approached the Booker Street project.
So I think, I'm sorry.
I'll listen to your, whatever you have to respond.
So I will admit, I didn't think about it like that, specifically in regards to Booker Street. I think that point is well taken. I think it's a little nuanced, it's a little different, but I can understandably see your point. One question I would have for you is then specifically in regards to the comprehensive plan, part of it, what would satisfy you in order for this to move forward? Or is there?
It would match the comprehensive plan's future land use map, which is an R2.
Right.
And, you know, it's offering this building type that they've done some elevations, but when you look at the footprint, when you look at the footprint compared to all the other footprints of their street, it's extremely different. And it, and I've said this to you already, it strikes me as almost like a suburban motel type. It has more parking area on the new, on the site than the building footprint itself in a flood plain. That's a highly pervious surface. And it's out of scale with the rest of the community on that street. And we've talked at length about, I'm all for adding much more building types, much more opportunities for affordable housing in our R1 and R2 areas. But that's a conversation that we need to have with the whole community in a very transparent process as opposed to having individual property owners come in with their ideas on how to increase the scale and massing of the neighborhood. So I just find that this is a real undermining of a process that is supposed to be community-driven.
I can understand from the process piece. However, I think one could make the argument also that this specific part of the neighborhood does need some alternative form of housing. It desperately needs something different and that is what this project brings. Would you agree with that?
But that's what long-range planning and zoning is supposed to do for us. I mean, eventually, we're going to be in a better, better position, hopefully, now that we've got the long-range, the manager for long-range planning. But that person's not here yet and right now, all I have is a process that is supposed to be what holds this government accountable to the public.
That's hard to argue against. You're right. You're not wrong.
No, I share those concerns and I just know that there was very limited options for which they could pursue to fulfill the vision that they want and so I can understand that frustration as well. But I do see the risk that we run by setting a precedent like this. And I do share the concerns about the impact that it has on just the overall street, given how out of place it is and...
It's just tough, though, like to Ms. Hill's point. Like, what is the developer supposed to do? Like, they're literally stuck in a rock and a hard place, like, in my opinion. They're trying to create a structure that is going to have a benefit to the community. They're trying to bring in affordable housing. I mean, this is the plot of land that they have. They're trying to do the best that they can with it. They're trying to change the, kind of the landscape of that quarter of the neighborhood, which could use some improvement in the eyes of some. Or some would say in the eyes of many. We've heard from people who live there. I mean, what is he supposed to do? Or excuse me, what are they supposed to do?
You follow existing zoning. Or you rezone to the con-plan.
But he, but then he's being penalized for, for our, like, we're going to, he has to wait for us to do the rezoning and then get the long-range plan and then he, or excuse me, it's the team, I'm sorry, ladies, they're not allowed to proceed forth because they have to wait on us to get our quote-unquote "act" together.
May I just follow something else up? Because, and I was comparing this to the River Road project. River Road corridor has been on the books since 2001, 2000, and our comprehensive plan is being the corridor that we need to redevelop. And we need to be robust about it. We need to put urban design in. In no way, at no point, does Nassau Street is one of the critical corridors in the city. Nassau Street is a small street. It's not a linking street. It's not a corridor. The whole designation of highway commercial adjacent to it is kind of inappropriate to begin with because there's no highway that is connected to it other than I-64, which you can't even front on.
Right.
So we're taking something that to me is a zoning, possibly a zoning error in expanding it in order to give someone the opportunity to put a greenhouse when we haven't even seen the program developed that justifies and convinces me that it's a legitimate business. It seems to me it was an opportunity to change the density that this developer could put in on this site and then they, I just, I haven't seen or been convinced that this farming operation is viable.
So I get, chime in here?
Nah, she's not wrong. I don't...
So the, I think the way that I would hear it is that the, so I'm remembering a couple different examples of the last few years. So Booker Street, Tenth and Jefferson.
Yeah.
Think about that also. So Booker Street, I actually have a different memory of what happened there, that that was not as much about zoning rules. There was really an equity interest with that neighborhood. And the zoning issue was a means to an end of protecting the neighborhood from a certain kind of intrusive gentrification and that that was the discussion that we had. And so the, a lot of, and then when I, you know, the Tenth and Jefferson was very similar in some ways to this discussion that we're having here. And that was a pretty tough discussion up here where we had a real divided vote on council and it was, and then we, well, if you don't, like, finish my remarks. And that the, you know, you get into this deeper thing about the SUP process is kind of a pressure valve for an elected body to find exceptions within the, within the strict application of the comprehensive plan and the zoning rules. That's one of the reasons it exists, as long as there's a credible argument for making an exception. As presented to you and you, it's defensible that it's a way for an elected body within the span of the comprehensive plan to create an exception and that you can do that. And that's what we did with Tenth and Jefferson. It was a divided vote. It was three-two vote. It was pretty tough and, but in that case, we wanted more density downtown and there was divided vote and these, some of the arguments were very similar here and I thought that they were very good arguments. And in this case, the way that I view this is it's, you know, is this project worth making an exception? This kind of complicated nuanced project for this part of town and what it seems to mean to be a very public-spirited project with some rough edges to it. And as you see with the planning commission vote, as you see, but the, what I'm sitting here weighing is in making this exception, what's the benefit to the neighborhood of the improvement of the land as opposed to having to wait several years for the plan to be rewritten? What's the, what's the actual use in the landscape of Charlottesville for urban farming, which is, it sounds highly beneficial that you would have because the city is densifying and you're not really going to have much farming in the ten square miles as it goes on. So it sounds pretty cool to have an intentional, just like Eco Village, sounds pretty cool to have that. And the difference between the by-right use and what you're going to get through the SUP doesn't seem to be that significant. I have concerns sitting here about the, I wish that you all had come with a business, with a plan for this. And I don't particularly, I'm not that compelled by the argument that people would have gotten too excited if we had put together a proper nonprofit plan because...
I just want to make sure, this is a rezoning, though. I just want to, because you keep mentioning SUP, but this is a rezoning.
Well, it's two parts.
Right. And I just want to...
And I also want to make sure that I'm also clear that the rezoning is, the SUP is predicated on the rezoning. So we're not just creating an SUP for the current state, we're creating an SUP off of a future state that is being asked for at the same time. So it's like a two-step to me, too.
Right.
Whereas a normal SUP, it's just from today's world, getting an SUP and there's certain conditions. This is like, we're going to shift our zoning and then on base on that zoning, I can now ask for this.
So I'm thinking through to the end of the process, maybe a shorthand. And I think, I think sitting here, it sounds to me like the pros outweigh the cons, but I'm not 100% decided.
So in terms of being able to present us with a plan and do the community engagement with the partners in terms of the farm, two weeks doesn't seem sufficient for that. So what, what would you, if that's one of the concerns, I'm...
Sure. Well, I think, I think I heard it's be scheduled for March 18th, probably. So that's, that's four weeks and if we were a little slow getting that going for some reason, we could probably ask for it to be delayed. We're, if that's a consideration, we're happy to go down that road. I have not come this far with this idea to end it on something that's actually the simplest part of it, maybe. So, yeah, we're, if that's something that makes you comfortable and understanding what we're really trying to do, we can, we can work very hard on that in the next four weeks.
I have another question while you're up here. I could, I could, do you mind, Madam Mayor? I could see you shaking your head and disagreeing and saying that something was being said that you disagreed with, one of the comments here and about the flooding and about the residential allowances and the road. What, how do you address the flooding concerns that are being raised very credibly and this whole thing about that the county would have only, I saw you shaking your head with disagreement at the, that the county had not allowed residential uses and that the road and that assertion?
Sure. So we have a little, actually, we have lots of information on this, I'll point this illustration. But the first is, I never asked the county for residential, never once. It was not, that was not the nod, I didn't ask for it. I asked for rural agriculture, the farm, with a specific provision that I would never put a house there, that's proffered out. So that was, that was never what we were after. On the flooding stuff, it's important to realize is that not all portions of this neighborhood are the same elevation. This is a great picture and actually illustrates how kind of a margin we have. And then Camille, which was a, like at Nelson County, a thousand-year flood, 150 people died, it was terrible, terrible, it was a bit severe here, too. The livestock market did flood, but the livestock market, notice there, see the elevation was 318? So that's about 10 feet below our property. So in that flood, the water was still 10 feet from, vertically, from our property. So the magnitude of that is huge. Like, that's like going from a 100-year to a 500-year flood. So we are, we are, if the, if the August 69 flood was a 100-year flood, we're 10 feet above that. So the flood map, which is what was, which the neighbor spoke, I think, pretty well on, is this map over on the left here. The flood map shows the flood line up here, but that's incorrect by elevation. Flood plain elevations are actually back here. And so the area, if you've seen the site, probably many of you have been by, down behind the White House at 19 Nassau, that's down the flood plain. But our buildings sit something in the range of 10 feet above that. River Road was only two feet above the flood plain. And that's actually a very similar project where the front of the building is the flood plain. We elevate the front of the building, the residential, above that elevation and that's perfectly allowed. We had, the fill that involved construction these has been approved. It was approved in 2017 by the city engineer. So we could go ahead and build the single-family houses or duplexes on the same space we're talking about with no further discussion. It's already been approved, FEMA's approved, the city's approved it. So I, people, I know it's a complicated issue and we've, I offer again to my neighbors, I will meet with them anytime and keep talking about this. But we are in the map, but we're not in the risk zone. And that's, that's a very important difference. And also is important that FEMA and the city engineering department have approved construction on this parcel already.
So in terms of affordable housing piece, which would include anyone that couldn't afford market rate units in the city, is there a potential consideration for you to expand the terms that the number of years that you accept below market rate? I think for 12 years, it goes pretty, pretty quickly since you have included that as something that you're proposing as a part of this request. And maybe that you can look at the numbers to see along that range what may work past the 12-year mark.
Okay, yeah, so we, you know, we're in proffer world, so I have to make those and, but I think that we could look at that and I believe a new proffer, if it's new, if it's a public hearing at the next meeting, updated proffer could be heard at that meeting. So we, we can look at that and talk about that. I'm happy to have that conversation.
I think so.
Oh, if you don't mind, Nicole has been listening to this and has, thank you for all your time.
Yeah, so sorry to, I know you've been, we've been looking at this for a long time and so I appreciate you letting me speak. I've been really invested in this project, so just wanted to say a few things to sort of texturize some of the community engagement because I've been very involved in that. And there, we walked up and down that street and there are a lot of people there that cannot make it tonight because they have four or five kids, they're working two jobs, and so they're not able to be represented here tonight. And so I just wanted to kind of texturize those conversations because they are really excited about this project. It can offer food in an area where there is a food desert. Their place to get food in this area is the BP. A lot of people on this street do not have cars and so they walk to get their food. And so this would be something that the people immediately adjacent to the project are very excited about. And we've had multiple meetings with them, we went door-to-door with them, and we had a meeting just for them in the Sunrise Park Community Center. And they talked about how they used to get groceries from a local farmer at the Sunrise Park and they would love to get that again because they no longer get that. And so I just wanted to texturize some of the community engagement because it has been extensive. We have a petition that has 125 signatures. We don't normally get that many people engaged in these kind of land use issues. So it's something that, I know that we don't have a business plan, we've met with food justice people, we've talked to Chantel and when she says we need a commitment, and we're like, we can't make a commitment because we don't have anything yet. And we'll be happy to work through a business plan if that's what you all want.
But couldn't you make the commitment contingent upon the approval?
We drafted, yes, we drafted something that did say... We drafted, yes, we drafted something that did say we are committed to talking further should this happen. Or we're committed if contingent upon the rezoning. Um, we did draft a letter like that and talked to Chantel and then they.
If we have thirty days, we have a lot more time to work through that too. We're happy to do that.
And so even I think back to the business plan, because what I'm hearing now from this is that there may be more things in the store besides, besides the food that's grown.
Yeah. So the thought, the, the foreign market principle is that you have basically all local vendors there. So you may have, for example, I don't say, I'm out from Mount Nelson. We have a lot of people, like it's a kombucha group that does that. And so they were local bottling. So like, um, you've got honey, you have bread. I have a bakery down near my house. So there's an opportunity for the local vendors to come and supply this. It would be primarily the farm, but it could be other food too besides just let's grow.
And you have to be careful because in terms of the prices of some of those goods, especially with the demand of it in Charlottesville. And how pricey some of those local items can be in terms of then offering that as a substitute for what needs to be offered.
So my original thought did not include the sort of nonprofit, but looking through it in an effort to, you know, make this, you know, fit into the community need better. That's a better way to do it. You're right. If you do this all as a for-profit, it'd be hard to run this and sell things and make it function. But I think a nonprofit can. I think that'll be an exciting thing for the neighborhood.
Yeah, you've got, I just, maybe you could go and talk to CNE, the Center for Nonprofit Excellence, and you could talk to Local Food Hub. I mean, there, there's a lot of expertise here. And I'm not sure, not to be disrespectful, but if, but if anybody hasn't run a nonprofit before and really gone through the, the annual cycle of a nonprofit, it's, it's a, can be a harrowing experience. And so the, I just, you don't want this to not work. I mean, there was a lot of uncertainty in what you just talked about. Whether you have kombucha is a different stall in your functioning, you know, nonprofit, farmers market than whatever is actually. I mean, you gotta have staff and you gotta have insurance. You gotta, like, all that stuff. I would, I think can be worked out in a month in a, in a plan, but I think that it, it really should be that.
So I guess, is there a motion for the rezone? No motion?
No motion. So you just need the sense that it comes back.
So we don't need for a number, okay.
I, I do need to know though, for the purpose of setting your next three agendas, whether you would entertain bringing this back for public hearing on March the eighteenth?
Because public hearing is required if, based on the, the change in the profit.
Sounds like we have no choice if.
Yeah. I would, I would like to watch it.
And I think, um, if I may add that, that, um, and I think somebody used the phrase tonight, shell game. I really need to see that this farming enterprise is legit. Because it does seem to me that we are really, really undermining our comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance. Going through a two-step process to get to this point, and you've been doing it for two years. And saying that this farming enterprise has been an integral part of it, and it doesn't seem to hold water, excuse the pun. It really needs to be much more substantial to match your rhetoric. Because right now, it just looks like it was a means to an ends, which was to get a different building type into this neighborhood that was not required by, not allowed by zoning and not, not allowed by our comprehensive plan vision. And I really want to know that you weren't just playing a shell game.
All right. Thank you. So we can take a.
No, keep going.
Oh, no.
No, no break. The weather's terrible.
Is it already coming in?
No, let's keep going.
Is it starting to sound?
Yeah. I don't know that.
I just wanted.
All right. So public hearing ordinance encroachment and aerial easement from the city for code building on West Main Mall, first of two readings. Keep going.
Mayor and councilors, I'm Lauren Hill to bring in the Director of Utilities. Brands Hatch LLC is in the process of constructing the Center of Developing Entrepreneurs for the Code Building on the downtown mall where Main Street Arena was formerly located. In order for the Code Building to be constructed, the developer is requesting an aerial encroachment easement as well as a right-of-way encroachment easement from the city. The proposed building has an underground component that is approximately forty feet below the surface that requires the need for excavation support in the form of shoring walls. The shoring walls require, require tieback anchors that will encroach into the public right-of-way. The shoring wall on the south side of the building or the water street side will also encroach into the right-of-way. Once the building has been completed to a level that the shoring walls are no longer needed, the developer will abandon the piles associated with the shoring walls and tieback anchors in the right-of-way. By detensioning the tieback anchors and the piles for the shoring walls will be cut approximately six feet below this existing surface. In addition, a temporary aerial encroachment is also needed in order for the building to, for this size to be constructed. The aerial encroachment is for formwork and scaffolding in connection with the installation of the building to be delivered to the site. This temporary encroachment will accommodate the boom of the crane to swing over the city's property. The easement is for the boom of the crane to use the city's right-of-way airspace during construction. Attached to the council package is a plaque showing the location of the proposed encroachment and temporary aerial easement. The Departments of Neighborhood Development Services, Public Works and Utilities have examined the location of the temporary aerial easement and the encroachment. And in addition, the utilities department has reviewed and approved the shoring plan to protect the city's utilities in the area. The departments have no objection to the proposed easement or encroachment. Therefore, staff recommends council approve the temporary aerial encroachment and the right-of-way encroachment easement. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are, are there any clarifying questions? No.
No questions from you?
All right. So we have.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm just going to do this one time. I did it before. I, I needed this. I'm going to disclose, I, I was advised by our attorney previously that I don't need to do this, that the, Mr. Woodruff's firm was a client of my prior law firm. It was an engagement that ended, I think, two and a half years ago. But, and the advice from our prior attorney was that because it was not a present engagement, it did not actually create even the requirement to disclose. But I just have an excess of caution. Right. Present or anticipated in its need. It's not, it's past. There's no, but I want to disclose it. And I think that, that, there's no issue with voting on this whatsoever. Okay.
Okay. Any other? All right. So we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? All right. Close the public hearing. Um, is there a motion?
I move we adopt an ordinance approving deed of encroachment and temporary aerial easement from the city of Charlottesville, Virginia to Brands Hatch LLC for the Center of Developing Enterprises code project at the western end of the downtown mall.
Second.
Any further discussion?
This is the first reading, right?
This is one of one, right?
Yeah.
Right.
First of two.
First of two. Oh, two, not one.
Supposed to be on the consent agenda.
But this will be on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Business Equity Fund. One hundred thousand dollar allocation, first of one reading.
So.
Make it quick.
So Mayor Walker, my colleagues from council, if I could have, um, the wonderful Mr. Chris Engel, Ms. Holly Lee, um, and Mr. Stephen Davis from CIC, please come forward. To assist with the presentation.
You're the presenter, I see.
Yeah, I'm the presenter. Don't do that. Vice Mayor Hill has jokes after ten o'clock. So thank you all for entertaining this agenda item. For about three or four months now, myself and Mr. Engel from Economic Development, as well as Ms. Lee from Economic Development, have been having discussions about different ways to improve, or excuse me, and Mr. Blair, forgive me, our city attorney. Different ways to improve and increase the number of minority businesses within the city of Charlottesville. And one idea that we were able to come up with collectively after looking at different models in different places as well as using our collective brains is if we were to create as a city, a business equity fund. And the business equity fund, as you all can see in the information in the packet, essentially would be an allotment from our equity fund in partnership with CIC, which has a longstanding reputation in our community for increasing the amount of small businesses within the area. And the fund would again be a partnership of CIC in which we would provide resources for businesses that are currently already in existence to be able to get a low-interest loan from this fund in which CIC would run. And they would be the ones responsible for handing out the loans and whatnot. And we would essentially be the ones providing the resources. And the goal is for, um, this, I'm sorry, give me the term again.
Socially disadvantaged individuals.
Socially disadvantaged individuals to be able to use these resources to scale up their businesses and be able to provide more of an economic impact to our community as well as, this is an opportunity for us to level the playing field. We've had a couple of different minority business and socially disadvantaged business breakfasts and luncheons and meeting with a wide variety of different folks. There is an appetite from the community, from different business owners in the community to be able to take advantage of such. And this is a little different from what CIC currently does because this offers the next level of funding for those who may be in need. And this allows for them to also have more resources. I think it would be a tremendous asset to the community, especially as we've been making strides in terms of addressing equity. And there's a lot of things that we can do both socially and from an education perspective, but we also have to look at the economic piece of it. And this, in my personal opinion, will help us provide economic equity to our city. So that's all from me. Mr. Engel, Ms. Lee and Mr. Davis are all here to answer any questions that you may have of any of us, as well as Mr. Blair. But that's all that I have.
I do have a question or I wonder if, if we could get like a walkthrough. Because you, you, you did answer my question about, to some degree, about the difference between this program and CIC's microloan program. But how would somebody coming in, walking in, uh, feel or see the difference between the CIC's microloan program and the city's equity loan program? Are they, is it pretty seamless? Is it really different? Or I just, how are you?
Mr. Engel or Mr. Davis?
Kind of operationally, I just want to get a sense how this will work.
They're looking at me.
Okay.
I think for us it.
Mr. Davis, if you could say your name.
Oh, Stephen Davis, Community Investment Collaborative. For us, it would, our goal would, that would be seamless, you know, that either, uh, Ms. Lee most likely is our kind of primary contact would refer someone if they come to the city. And we would obviously have information on our website about this has one of the loan funds that is available to entrepreneurs in the region. This one just being restricted to socially disadvantaged individuals in, within the city of Charlottesville.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have.
Mr. Davis.
Two questions. And not getting this first is, so a hundred percent of the amount that would be allocated would go towards the.
Yes, all of this would be a part of a restricted loan fund.
And the interest rate, is that the current interest rate on the microloans?
Yeah, our interest rates currently range from six point seven five percent to nine point seven five percent. And it is basically lower if you have been a graduate of our workshop. You know, because that just shows we have a kind of longer track record with you and have a sense of kind of what you, you've learned and you've developed. Or, and also a little bit lower if you bring a qualified cosigner.
So in terms of the default rates on your microloans so far, they.
Our current, uh, total repayment rate is about ninety-seven percent. So we've lost just under three percent of the loans we've made.
So I mean, that in itself, if you're talking about maybe reaching the same group of people possibly, the, a lower interest rate, especially for the socially disadvantaged with.
Individuals.
Individuals.
SDA.
Yes. Well, I don't want to use that one. Okay. Anyway, moving on.
Thank you.
If the interest rate is, was there a consideration for the interest rate to possibly be lower?
Uh, I mean, we had kind of, in the conversations with the Office of Economic Development, we had, uh, asked about if there were any other criteria or things that they would like us to change. And we're open to discussing that, uh, kind of within kind of parameters, uh, but we have not had a, at the moment, we're just kind of sticking with our kind of program as it currently operates.
Am I, the reason for that is because when you're talking about the individuals who are able to start businesses and who have kind of that investment coming from family, friends, or have the credit rating to get a lower interest. At a bank for individuals who do not have those opportunities, it would be helpful, I mean, six and nine percent. While it may be lower than they would be able to get, you know, at a bank if they could get a loan at all. It, it still would be, I think, more helpful to the group of people that we're talking about if there were possibly a, a lower, um, you know, repayment rate. And what that looked like over the life of, you know, like a five-year loan, especially at thirty-five thousand dollars at nine percent, you know, interest. So if that could be, you know, capped at a lower rate, that would be, um, I think that would be a great addition to the program.
Mr. Davis, um, is that something that we would be able, maybe, I mean, would you have to take that back to your board or is that something that me, you, Mr. Engel, Ms. Lee, excuse me, sorry, Ms. Lee, not leaving you out, that we could discuss?
Uh, we'd be open to discussing it for sure. I think, uh, just a matter of identifying, one, kind of, how different is the population, you know, uh, coming in for this segment than kind of who we already serve, as well as what are, you know, are, are there additional risk and how does the fund perform? But we'd be open to discussing it.
Okay. Okay. So Ms., excuse me, Mayor Walker, if we were to, if we could tentatively move forward and then could provide counsel with an update once we have everything finalized and maybe even be in, in discussion with you and keeping you abreast of where that interest like, interest like, interest rate number goes to, would that satisfy I'm you for tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we do need to pass a resolution tonight.
Correct. Yeah. Oh, she said that would satisfy her for tonight.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
But this is coming back, right?
No.
No.
It's one of one.
It wouldn't be, oh.
So that's why I was asking.
Yep.
Yeah. Because then it would be as is.
Yes.
Right.
So in, since this is the city's resources that it, that would be, how much of the funding from the microloans comes from the city?
So this would be adding to our loan fund restricted specifically for this use. So it'd be all, any loans that we did that qualified here would come entirely from these funds until we use it all. And then, uh, we continue to make other loans as we normally do. So all of these loans, yes. And then our other loans would continue.
As, so this could be, this interest rate could be different than your other loans?
We could potentially, yes.
You could.
Okay. And I just have a question. How did you derive this interest rate to begin with?
Uh, so the kind of story, when we started CIC, uh, or when they started before I, before I was on board, it started at ten percent and we kind of lowered it after the kind of first year or so of loans. One, to get it out of double digits, which, you know, marginally, you know, at the high end now. And, uh, and then created incentives for folks to complete our workshop by lowering it further. So the way it works is the promote, advertised interest rate is nine point seven five percent. And it's a two percentage point discount if you've been through our sixteen-week workshop and an additional one percent if you qualified cosigner.
So moving.
So moving it down to, for folks who we have a longer relationship with or an additional kind of repayment capacity. And we do not, have not done enough loans over our history to really kind of a- accurately price interest as you would in a typical, uh, uh, financing situation.
So are these loans collateralized at, at all?
Uh, so at, at the lower end, unlikely to be collateralized. As they move up into the ten, fifteen, twenty thousand up, you know, it may be collateralized by inventory or a piece of equipment, but certainly not fully collateralized.
Because this is one of the reasons that you'd have higher interest rates is if they're not, if they don't have a lien filed on, on other stuff that you own.
Yeah, but with the rate of default that he, um, said, three percent, right, that's what you said.
The current rate. We're actually interested in taking more risks to actually make more loans available.
Yeah, and so, and because of the nature of the, I mean, if they were having a high default rate, then I mean, I think that would be something we can, we would consider. But since they're not, um, then it just, so a thirty-five thousand dollar loan at nine percent, um, the interest paid on that would be eight thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Right, and so, I think it's pretty, if they had a five-year, I mean, there's a whole lot of-
And, and so, so one of the things we saw from the breakfast that we had, and, um, Ms. Lee was there, Mr. Engel, were you at the breakfast? Ms., Ms. Lee was at the breakfast though, and Mr. Murphy. One of the things we saw is that, um, many of the individuals are, the individuals with access to this, uh, fund, more than likely wouldn't come in at the higher end of the interest rate because, uh, many of them have been through C I C. But we're just looking to, uh, have another fund in a higher level in which they can go to and also be provided with some additional resources in terms of, um, different levels of training in which we're gonna start, like as a Minority Business Advisory Task Force and whatnot as well. So, I mean, a few of them who have, we have in mind who we've discussed, uh, well, not, we haven't discussed the specific applicants, cause nobody has applied yet, we don't have the fund. But some of the people who were in mind, they've been through C I C already. They just need the next level of funding. So they would potentially come in at that, maybe the, the low end of the six or maybe the five or whatnot.
So would you all be willing to just do a range of possibly make six the high end and do maybe a three to six percent interest?
So I have no issue with that, but I don't know if Mr. Davis has to talk to us.
I don't know that if I can commit to that here, uh, not mention the other thing. It's not just about covering the losses on the interest. We do provide a lot of ongoing service when we've made loans through kind of the monthly check-ins with our borrowers, continuing to connect them to other resources or part of our programs that we house. We are certainly open to a, uh, lower interest rate, you know, specific to this fund. Uh, I just think, uh, I don't know that I could say, I could commit to that much of a, uh, a difference, you know, here tonight.
One question might be what, you know, of the hundred thousand dollars, if we were to lower the interest rate, how much, you know, it could be that some of the funding of that would come from the hundred thousand. And so you're just cutting some amount of mon- it's not, this is not gonna support that many loans, but it could be that some thousands of dollars allow the interest rate to be capped at.
Yeah.
And that, that would be a priority of council through this funding, we would say.
Well, instead of taking that, maybe we allocate that dollar amount too. So if it's-
Or we do a hundred and ten thousand dollars instead of, right?
I mean, I think that, I'd be, I think that's doable, most likely, you know, obviously some specifics, you know, to work out there. But, uh, you know, I think we're, would be open to that.
I, I support what the mayor is asking about, which would be having the interest rate, given, given the purpose of this, if it could be in a more kind of-
Mr. Engel, were you-
One option to consider, there's only one reference to interest rate in the, the donation agreement here. Potentially one change if, if, um, Mr. Blair's amenable to is, is just a, um, up to, not to exceed nine percent.
Yes.
And then we could let, um, C I C and their board kind of, uh, internally respond to us about what they feel, um, they would be most comfortable with, and that way we'd still be within the letter of the agreement.
So, Mr. Blair, could, I have two questions before you answer that. And it's probably from Mr. Davis, not probably, will be from Mr. Davis as well. If we were to be able to include the language up to and not to exceed, um, if that was okay with Mr. Blair, Mr. Davis would, you'd think it would be amicable to take back to your board, um, up to and not to exceed seven percent? In terms of the interest?
I think I could, that can probably be arranged, yes.
Okay, would that satisfy you?
That's down to nine percent.
Okay, right, so wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to go over seven?
And just to, uh, to point the council, it's, in the donation agreement, it's section three, purpose. The fourth paragraph down, the final sentence says, "The loans shall have interest rates ranging from six to nine percent."
Yeah, and closing fees.
Closing fees shall range from one percent to three percent. We would change that to the loans shall have an interest rate, annual interest rate not to exceed seven percent?
Mayor Walker, is that, how would you feel about that, that change?
That's-
No, I mean, I think your suggestion was great. Do you, would that be okay with you, that language?
Yeah, I am interested in what the conversation, like what he has, um, the conversation with the board overall about what, um, and whether subsidizing it on our end versus the, um, business owners, um, having made potentially a higher interest rate is, um, a possibility.
Okay.
So-
Just to clarify, because when we launched, uh, Bank On many years ago and did it through V and B, essentially the city as the funder is a hundred percent securing the loan-
Yeah.
For C I C in this, uh, case, so-
So what I think-
You know, it seems like there should be good flexibility with the rate because you can never get hurt in making a loan. Is that correct?
Yeah. But I think the interest rate, how is that money used? Is that money used towards your administrative?
Yeah, so like, uh, after losses, that would be to offset kind of administrative and programming, uh, that we do.
Yeah. Yeah, and so that's what you need to check out to make sure that that's still gonna cover your administrative.
I mean, I think it largely, I think, I think with what you're suggesting here, I think we're largely okay. I think, um, you know, we're absolutely, we would not lose any, you know, funds. But if we, if any losses are incurred, there would be less ability for, to do loans as a part of this fund, so.
So, good. But, I mean, just tell me what else you want, if you-
No, I think that's it. I mean, so for me, if we could, um, if we could know what the, what that dollar amount would be, then I think this makes it, um, the loan more favorable to the potentially socially-
Socially disadvantaged.
Disadvantaged individuals.
Help me understand, you said-
Because if they're using the interest rate, um, the money that is paid in interest to fund administrative costs, you know, to take care of administrative costs, then that is the concern with a lower interest rate because there will be less money coming in. But if we could say that upfront, because of what this program is intended to do, that we will cover whatever tho- that dollar amount is, then that should take care of it. And then we should be able to cap the interest rate and not do an even up to.
I mean, just simple math on it, for, if there's a hundred thousand dollars in outstanding loans, you know, if it's, if it's five points lower than the current rate, then that's five thousand dollars for each time that, like, the loans are cycled through. Whether that's happened, that, that'll take, you know, over the course of more than a year just cause loans are paid back, you know, and then-
Different times.
And also how do, how much demand is there for the program until we actually put it to work is, you know, does it take us three months to get out, you know, that money? Or does it take us twelve months to get out? But in general, for every revolution of the fund, it would be, you know, for every percentage point, it's a thousand dollars.
Right.
And if, if I may, I, I think the way you've explained it, there's, there's the administrative cost that's a portion of the interest, and then there's always the risk delta as well. And I guess the question I have to follow up on the council is if, if the allocation was a hundred and nine thousand, which would be the maximum, nine percent in a year, would that make you more amenable to capping the rate on, as, as the mayor had stated?
Uh, yes.
Okay, okay. So we could change the allocation to a hundred and nine thousand? And then that would ensure that the rate would be no more than seven percent for each loan?
Well, no.
What is?
No, because then they-
No, you're already covering their potential admin cost with the nine thousand dollars. And so I think what Mr. Blair is proposing is they have the safety and security of knowing their admin is covered upfront on the first hundred thousand dollars worth of loans. And in effect, you know, you could offer any rate, you know, four, five percent. And they would know they're covered on their admin cost. And hopefully, they're gonna have great cost, or, uh, cost recovery, you know, and loan experience on this, and you'll continue to replenish the fund.
Got you.
So then the question is, what is the interest rate?
Could you go down to four?
Well, I don't even think we do it at that rate if we're talking about the full, um-
Covering up the one, uh, so what rate do you have in mind?
I mean, if you're offering the kind of covering the full round there, so for, I think we, you know, could be open to going, you know, even lower and, uh, just because you are covering that interest effectively. So I think at least for the kind of first revolution of the loan fund, it's, you could, you know, if you wanted to make it an interest-free loan fund, you could make that an option, you know.
We wanna have this to be revolving. We want some incentive for people to pay it back so other people could take advantage of it. So I don't wanna get-
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the, the, I, I don't think it, I don't think it messes with the incentive for them to pay it back. It's, uh, but just become a question of like, do we, in the future, does it continue to be interest-free? Or do we are able to do a hundred thousand in interest-free loans?
But the money that is, um, the interest that is paid is not then that, you know, reinvested into the fund to donate back to future owners. It goes into C I C's, um-
The interest-
The interest, yes.
Would come back and come back to the-
Yes.
Yeah.
So you could make it-
So they will be paying, yeah. So at the nine thousand dollar, then we are saying that would be-
The interest can be as low as we want.
But isn't there, is some, is there some benefit to having some interest on that loan so that it does provide an incentive to pay it back in a timely way?
So, so you all already have a really good track record with people paying back their loans?
We do currently, I'd say, you know, part of our, but I think, just to kind of address your question related, or asking about lower, it's low at the moment, but we are interested in making more impact and giving more opportunities to, uh, to small business owners. And that requires taking a little bit more risk over time. So we can't, you know, if I could guarantee three percent forever, I would. But at the same time, we wanna give more business owners a chance to be successful, and we don't wanna turn down some folks who are kind of on that border if we can give them a chance at success when they wouldn't have had it otherwise. So that's why our, 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 our loss rate could go up, and we would still be comfortable if we're actually giving people a chance and making more impact in the community.
So for this time around, would we be okay with capping it at the three percent and then subsidizing the? Does that sound?
That sounds reasonable.
I'm comfortable with that.
I think that would be-
And then we're gonna revisit it after this cycle.
Yes.
So-
Works for me.
Essentially, we're gonna provide a hundred thousand dollars at three percent?
Well, it would be based on, on what you'd said earlier. The allocation would need to be a hundred and six, if there's still three percent.
But that was, would be if it was at the maximum, if everyone was getting the nine percent rate.
Right.
Is there a way to figure this out tonight?
I mean, I'd say the, the more flexibility you give, if you wanna get it done tonight, the more we'll work at it within the spirit of we, the city wants to offer as affordable, low-interest loans for this business equity fund as possible and is willing to, you know, allocate within some allocation, offset some of those costs to do so. If, if there can be some trust there and figuring out, we're happy to work with you to achieve that.
Could we do the, the up to amount for the allocation also, and then you all could tell us?
Hundred and nine thousand.
Right.
And then you could tell us, well, we just said a hundred and six, right?
Or, a hundred and six would get to the three percent.
And then you-
Up to not to exceed, right, three percent.
I think I'm on the same page, so I'll let y'all.
Okay.
Just for simplicity's sake, uh, and, you know, since the dollar delta is so small, if council might entertain just appropriating the hundred and nine thousand dollars and then, uh, stipulating that the first three thousand dollars, which is what they would recover in the first cycle of the grant, are returned to the revolving loan fund rather than becoming part of the admin costs of the C I C, that would effectively satisfy the requirements too.
I'm fine with that.
We've got a lot of amendments on the table.
Yeah.
And I haven't been taking notes that quickly.
So I think we got-
But what is, I mean, is there harm in just having a revised version on our consent agenda the next go around? I'm just trying to figure out-
I think that's better, and I think it's more transparent.
Just do that.
Okay.
Well, I would, well-
We're, we're gonna pass it.
Yeah, I know we're gonna pass it, but I think, you know, we got it.
I don't know.
No, I, I think it's better practice to have a clean copy in, in the public eye, and then we formally adopt it, uh, from the consent agenda next meeting.
But I don't get, how is it different from when we make amendments with other items? They're not always super clean, we just say it.
This is a lot of money, in fact, and, I mean, I just feel like it's-
There's only two amendments that was made, it's going from a hundred thousand to a hundred-
Is there something pressing, like, as a reason why not?
Well, one, there's another, there's another minority business breakfast coming up that we wanna be able to let them know that, yeah, this is passed. The Minority Business Advisory Task Force is also-
Okay, so what would be the amendments?
Could I offer one compromise perhaps?
Okay.
Is, the resolution could be amended and passed tonight, that the sum of up to a hundred and nine thousand is hereby paid. But then, we can put the donation agreement with these terms discussed tonight on the consent agenda for your, your question about transparency, which would include the interest rates, the hundred and nine thousand, and Mr. Murphy's point about the six and three.
And so, and then if we don't do a, um, future investment, then that, the difference will be returned to the city. Okay, alright.
So, yeah, I'm fine with it, but the thing is, he literally just said the amendments.
I know, we were going with it.
Yeah, but, but it's gonna be put in writing and put in, in a, in a next posting.
So the public can see.
And, and if I may add, Mayor Walker, into Council of Bellamy, part of, part of my thinking has been, um, because in the past, when we have made a lot of amendments to a resolution in the public eye, I have gotten feedback from people that that was very confusing. One of those resolutions, for example, was the civilian review board way back when. And I think right now, it's really important that we, we do have a clean document in front of the public so they can see what we're voting on. That's my opinion.
I mean, if there's a pressing, if there's a pressing timing, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go for it, I just don't understand.
But we're passing the resolution.
There is a pressing time.
And tonight, the money would be allocated.
Yeah, the money's allocated.
Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion. So I'd like to make a motion, well, do I need to read the resolution because of the-
If you just wanna make a motion to pass the resolution with a hundred and nine thousand replacing a hundred thousand.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we council, uh, pass the resolution as stated for the business equity fund for the sum of a hundred and nine thousand dollars, and it is hereby paid from currently appropriated funds in the Council of Strategic Initiatives account.
Second.
And we're both, alright, alright, please vote. Alright.
Thank you, colleagues, this was a huge step for us in terms of equity and economic equity, appreciate it.
And sorry, I didn't know that question was gonna take this much discussion, so I'll ask in the future.
Yeah, like when we're talking.
Well, I thought we were talking, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, Ms. Lee, Mr. Engel.
Okay.
There's one more thing.
So we have one quick, um, five-minute break.
Well, we only got one more.
There's only one more thing.
I know.
Can you pull one?
Yeah.
I'll just take a break.
Yes, okay.
Five minutes.
Hopefully. Hopefully.
And finally, and most important, a set of recommendations to come back to the Planning Commission and City Council with. The scope of work developed by this think tank included three planning goals, and in those three goals, six different objectives. Planning goal A is just that the deliverables are identified as in the approved scope of work, that they, we develop a small area plan that includes very, very clear recommendations. Again, the think tank came up with these directives, and they were very clear in what type of document they were looking for. So, very clear recommendation, and to develop a public participation framework that we could learn while doing this plan, but hopefully that framework and template could then be relocated to other small area plans and other neighborhoods. Things that we learned here could be replicated within other planning processes. And goal B, a process that brings the community together. The think tank and the neighborhood really wanted more than just a long-range plan, but something that would bring the people of the neighborhood together as well. That would be done with objectives like community events, making sure that we're bringing the entire neighborhood together, and also a process that shows that the community is very welcoming of all people. Finally, their goal C was to develop a plan that will bring results. And I'll have to admit, of the meetings I attended, that was the thing I heard most often, is, "We've been planning. We've been planning for years. We haven't seen results. We need to see something, even if it's small. We want to see big, but we don't really expect to see big until you can fix some small things." Very, very important, and you'll see that throughout the entire plan that we've developed. As a matter of fact, they even came up with their own word of SMART recommendations, and that stands for Specific, Measurable, Achievable, Realistic, and Timely. They went to all this effort because it's so important to have a few quick wins. The other thing is that there is a previous plan that was produced by, it was a small plan, but produced by the Fifeville neighborhood, the Cherry Avenue Small Area Plan. They wanted to make sure that that was maintained, that there was a lot of work and effort put into that, and so they wanted to make sure that that was included in this bigger plan. And so, we tried to accomplish all of these goals and objectives in the work that we did. A little bit of background, just to take you through, since 2013, this has been worked on. The TJPDC became involved in later of 2017 with a signed contract with the city, and I think it was September, yes, September of 2017. We introduced a website and began our process in 2017, 2018, and we intend to have a final document to the Planning Commission in March or April of this coming year, 2019. The study area that we looked at was really, you know, we call it the Cherry Avenue Plan, but it is the entire Fifeville area. You can see the boundaries there. It did, we did look at different, you know, sub-neighborhoods within the Fifeville neighborhood in different ways, but all were included, and each one, you know, took its own look, its own view. We went into each neighborhood and met with individuals in all of those, and because we did find, in the community engagement process, the traditional community meetings of everybody coming to Buford Elementary was not going to get a lot of the people out. And it says it looked further in here, but it was so important, and the one thing we found throughout this, we started doing what we called front porch meetings. They were actually normally held in the kitchens, but we called them the front porch meetings, where we went to individual houses. This was a process we learned during the hydraulic planning, hydraulic Route 29 planning, where businesses, you can't get businesses to come to community meetings because they're working at all different times. And the only way we were able to get the business buy-in would be going business to business to business, and we found that that was the most successful way to get to the citizens here, is going front porch to front porch to front porch. So, it's one of the lessons learned that we've had during this process. The, while we spent a lot of time looking at, you know, those quick wins, things that could be achieved in a timely manner, we also spent a lot of time looking at the past and the future for the visioning. And of utmost importance is the future growth demands and supply while meeting the overarching vision of the area. And here's a good example, that between the years 2000 and 2009, the area experienced an average growth of thirty-three dwelling units per year. Then between 2010 and 2018, that number dropped by over half. They only averaged fifteen dwelling units per year. But under current zoning, five hundred new dwelling units, more units than Fifeville is seen in twenty years, could be created there.
That's the potential.
In the undeveloped and underserved lands. Not to mention an additional two hundred thousand square feet of commercial space. And that's under current zoning. That would require no changes for these types of things to occur. The public engagement for the visioning, and all the different efforts that we made, we've received over four hundred comments from the public, so quite a bit of comments have come in. And those comments came from the community team, the think tank meetings, front porch meetings, focus groups, open houses. I mean, we had a couple of very good planning sessions at Buford Elementary. We also, as we mentioned earlier, it's very difficult to get businesses involved, so we went door to door. We went to eighteen businesses in the Cherry Avenue area to get their input, and those are all included as well. Comments were mostly focused on shorter-term, immediate requests, but many did include longer-term visioning. Currently, in the draft document, we have over sixty recommendations, sixty individual pages for each individual recommendation that, right now, is drafted to be made. Examples of some of the immediate short-term fixes, we had a middle schooler say, "I just want the water fountain in the park working. It hasn't been working in years." Shade trees, trash, bus shelters, bus service. One of the bigger concerns is the neighborhood's asking for more bus service, and the most recent draft of the Transit Development Plan is talking about less bus service there. So, those are some of the more immediate things. They also looked at the visioning, the long-term. If we heard it once, we heard it a lot of times. We do not want to become West Main Street. We don't want the density that West Main has, and that with Roosevelt Brown and Cherry, the concern is that that could very easily happen. So, we heard that. There's the concerns of traffic congestion at Cherry, especially at peak times, and affordable housing. Affordable housing was certainly, was looked at in very different ways, because the concern was that to get more affordable housing, you would have to look at much taller buildings and much, much higher density, where the consensus was more of looking at increasing density, but in a way that would keep the neighborhood, preserve the neighborhood more like it is now. A lot of time was spent talking about accessory dwelling units. We looked at a number of lots that would accommodate, if some policies were changed, accessory dwelling units that could be added to the existing single-family lots. That was very well received, so that people could have a revenue source to fix up houses that they already owned. So, it wasn't so much the affordability. The homes are owned, but there's no money left over to repair roofs, or heating and air systems, and things like that. Accessory dwelling units could provide an affordable rental while providing a revenue source to maintain houses a little bit better. So, those are some of the longer-term.
Could you go into the place-based community development character? The last bullet there, under the affordable housing.
That was, yeah, certainly, that was one of the things, is that they were more of looking at, you know, what you all have been talking about with the place-based, the form-based code, is just, it was more of the appearance, that appearance of keeping the neighborhood preserved more like it is now, than having something, what they kept saying, that would be similar to West Main Street.
And I've shared doing, because I've only been to one meeting, but I shared that they may have to be more open to what is, you know, built in that area. And this is what, I have family members that live in this area, and so, it's just, it's gonna be hard to, you know, look at the city as a whole, and then limit, even with this, just like we were talking about in the, you know, Martha Jefferson neighborhood, the same type of deal to limit what buildings look like, you know, and how high we go. And the other question with the accessory dwelling units, we still don't have a way to restrict those, right, to rentals.
Well, and Mr. Boiles, I mean, I know that Stacy Pathia was working with a group from Portland.
Yes.
And now that she's gone, because that was one of the things they were gonna be sharing with us, is how do we make it tie to affordable housing if we gave them loans, for example, to do the repairs?
Sure. And though Stacy is working with Albemarle County now, we're as a region still working with the group from Portland.
Right. So, you're gonna give us a report or something?
Matter of fact, yes, and they're even coming to speak during the Tom-Tom Festival as well. So, we're continuing to work with them, because what we're finding, especially in the urban areas of Charlottesville and Albemarle County, a lot of some of the needs are the same. Now, in the rural areas, accessory dwelling units are very, very different. But we're continuing that effort.
Great.
To have them help us and make recommendations of, first and foremost, what policy changes would have to occur.
Okay. Chip, can I ask?
Of course.
You know, I was the head of the Neighborhood Association when all this started, back in 2014, and I know that one of the biggest things was Kim's Market, and what was happening with the blighted, and that's been, and how much you could control with rezoning and visioning and so on about, and then food, and I'm surprised that food isn't, I mean, that was a big thing coming up back then, was.
Grocery stores.
And believe me, Kim's Market is in here, and food, yes. Especially Kim's Market. One of the things that is being looked at is the need for a business analysis. Grocery store there.
Well, there was a, well, that's a longer.
Yeah, yeah.
It just came up constantly, was that if that could be a viable, walkable.
Right, in fact, the.
And it was for a long time, because the IJU used to be better.
And it was a small footprint, and that's East Market, East Market's small, and.
Yes.
Estes.
Estes, right.
And there are.
They need the rooftops.
That's it, and you've got, you probably have more grocery stores within a certain area there than you did ten years or fifteen years ago.
But it does get down to that needing more units, but I think, I mean, one of the things that we learned in the form-based code discussions and the strategic investment area is that if you change the setbacks, our setbacks are very deep, and you can get more building area on the site, so that the building height doesn't have to be so high. And they were maintaining, if not maintaining or exceeding the capacity on the lots with a lower building height, but just allowing to build more on the lot. So, I think the zoning discussion's important, because people are really concerned about the canyon effects of West Main Street.
Yes, very much. Like I said, it's not, the West Main discussions were not just having West Main-type buildings along Cherry, but also the actual buildings on West Main creating that canyon kind of effect, where they feel like they could be sided on both sides with very tall buildings. So, a lot of discussion, a lot is in the draft report, and a lot more will be, I know. And not, I think we're even looking at, okay, what if the neighborhood couldn't support a full-size grocery store? Are there ways to use the local convenience-type stores with more fresh vegetables, you know, what healthy, quick-access food products? So, okay, it's definitely in there. The next steps to finalize the plan are to create the technical committee that I mentioned earlier. This will further the work that the think tank completed. The committee will consist of neighborhood members, planning staff, commissioners, businesses, UVA, UVA Health System. UVA is a major property owner in the Fifeville area. Transit, transportation officials, as well as many others, to help draft that final plan. What we're considering right now, one of the first things that we will put on the agenda for the technical committee, is to finish this plan up, we're looking at a multi-day event that we would hold in the neighborhood, where stakeholder groups could be brought in, appointments could be made with individuals, and have open community meetings. So, in a three- or four-day period, a lot of very intensive work could occur. We've even talked about our staff, we would probably just get a room possibly at the hotel or the community center there, the recreation center, and our staff would just work from there for three full days. And they could go out to the front porch meetings as well. We've had some people say, "Well, people still won't show up to talk." Well, for us, as long as we have internet access, our staff, whether they're in my office or there, they can be working the same. So, it's one of the things we're gonna recommend, but we'll let the technical committee decide if they feel that's a worthwhile endeavor. And as I mentioned, all this work should wrap up in April or May of this coming year. Some of the key takeaways, observations, is that residents desire a neighborhood that's welcoming to all, very, very important. We heard that quite often. The growth on West Main that I talked about is a concern. And then housing affordability, along with the preservation of the existing housing Finally, the next steps, we'll do the additional vetting of the draft plan with the city departments and the technical committee, final review of the document, we'll begin to engage with the Planning Commission. Well, those will produce the additional drafts of the plan, we'll get them to you for your comments, and then we will deliver those to the Planning Commission, along with the recommendations, and then the framework plan, which is those takeaways that you can then use in other neighborhoods. I will say, it's not a very perfect template. What works in one neighborhood is not gonna work perfectly in another, but it does start to give you some ideas of what you'll be able to do. And that's what we've done so far. Be glad to answer any other questions. I also just ask whether it's a technical committee or a steering committee, you know, kind of, we've thought about it. We want a committee that's giving us direction, and providing some work, some input.
So, would that be council-appointed, or city manager-appointed, or is Fifeville Neighborhood Association-appointed? Who is doing it?
Yeah, we get, there will be two committees. One would be some kind of steering committee, there could be technical committee, like Chief said. They will compose of representatives from the neighborhood, somebody from Planning Commission, City Council, UVA representative because of their influence, maybe somebody from Buford Middle School, maybe a church, and then maybe a couple of business owners, you know, to look at the plan. And then subsequent after that, then the city's representative from the appropriate city department with vested interest in the plan, like NDS, public utilities, back-and- rec, police department, fire department, you know, basically folks that constitutes the DRT, Development Review Team, they will also review it. And then, once they complete the review, then the final documents, you know, will be put in place. At that point, we begin the public hearing or public comment period.
And that's on way to being adopted to the comp plan.
That's, that's.
Are you gonna have implementation strategies?
I'm sorry?
Implementation strategies?
Yes, yes, yes. And we, as I said, we've already got roughly sixty. And that's one of the other templates that we've produced, that we've worked with NDS, NDS very closely on, is that we believe it's gonna provide you a very good template that you can use for other small area plans. It's one page per implementation item.
And one other thing is, is there, and we haven't established anything like this as a council, but are there, and it's related to the Housing Needs Assessment, are there gonna be established targets for affordable housing, for build-out analysis purposes, so that we have targets that we're looking for?
Yeah, we can, we can.
I mean, that, moving forward.
Yeah, we can add that, and funding will be critical in terms of implementation, and then supported by some kind of liberal land use policies, you know, in terms of zoning and things like that.
So, it would then allow the plan to be used as a way to then, if we ever get a land bank or whatever, but to be able to then let us target which parcels to purchase, because when you get a toehold with affordable housing right off the bat, you've kind of created a critical mass to build on. I mean, that's, that would be ideal, if the small area plans could start doing that for us, but is that something we need to make a formal policy on, or is that something that, because at one point, the idea of having like, you know, twenty-five percent of the units being affordable housing in the small area planning areas might be one way to start getting at that, with twelve hundred units of actual new units that the Housing Advisory Committee said that we needed to build? Well, this would be a way for us to start measuring that as we go.
Okay. I'm in support.
And just something to give some guidance and criteria.
Yeah, I'm in support.
That'd be great.
I could, I could.
Especially if this is a framework.
And I could certainly see if you don't have that, you would end up with small area plans, with neighborhoods going, "Well, as a city, you want twenty-five percent, but we don't want it in our."
Yeah, I mean, that has to be integrated with the plan.
Yeah, it would be one way to force it to be looked at with numbers in every one of the areas that you do a plan for.
And if I may suggest, at your last meeting, you know, there was the appropriation for the comp plan and zoning ordinance, so probably it would be a good idea if you want to formalize that as a policy, that it's done now, or in the near future, to inform those folks that are hired.
Yes.
When they're developing plans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good night. So, the ABRT is just for our read-only, and was there any comments or questions about the next steps for the ABRT priority setting commission? No? Okay. So, now we have the item C from the Capital Fund Transfer for Completion of the Standard and Design Manual Rewrite. And so, my concern here was just, you know, to spend sixty-six thousand dollars when, from what I remember of the conversation, the concerns were that the information hadn't been incorporated, but even in the memo, staff said that the reason some of the submissions weren't incorporated was because they were unable to incorporate it based on state or federal code, other than, so that they were unable to include it. I just didn't understand what the engagement process that they had, the number of people that they reached, the number of submissions, and how long it was opened, that why would we be spending this amount of money on additional engagement? I thought staff was just gonna work with those individuals to incorporate suggestions if incorporating those suggestions were possible.
So, I mean, I don't know why, Mr. Murphy, why does staff say that they need sixty-six thousand dollars more in transfer? Because at the time that we had the discussion, to open up and incorporate more input, it wasn't clear that there was gonna be a need for more resources, but maybe that was just not articulated.
If you recall, council-directed staff to go back and size up how much it would cost for additional community engagement with the Planning Commission, or a joint work session with the City Council and Planning Commission, and then CADRE or the Business Community. So, what you have before you is what the staff in discussion with the consultant, how much it's gonna cost for that to be accomplished.
And I recall that.
I recall that now, yes. And there was, and also the Bike Pad Advisory Committee, and they were, I was seeing a lot of traffic with their information.
Yeah, but.
But they're not a formal committee.
The Bike and Ped, Place Design Task Force, everybody, they had the opportunity. We had a pretty elaborate and robust community engagement process with all those committees and commissions, you know, so we don't have to include everything everybody suggests, you know, because we have some kind of restrictions, well, imposed by the state, because once a street is completed, and the City Council passes a resolution to accept that street, the city receives maintenance funding from the state. All the streets, most of the streets within the city, we do receive maintenance funding from the state that goes to public works for maintenance of the street. So, as much as possible, staff has tried, you know, to structure the rewrite of the standards and design manuals, you know, to comply with those state regulations. And secondly, I think council needs to understand that, some of the comments made by, coming from the CADRE and some of the developers, you know, is to liberalize the requirement for development of infrastructure, you know, and which staff finds to be a problem in the. a challenge, because once the city council accepts the infrastructure, it becomes the city's liability. And if it's not constructed the way staff likes it to be constructed and in accordance with the regulations, then it becomes our liability once it's accepted. And that coupled with the fact, excuse me, that we have to make provisions for state regulations, you know, I don't think that if we have additional community engagement process, there's nothing wrong spending additional time with the city council or planning commission, but I don't see a lot of changes that's going to occur as a result of that. I believe we have a very thorough process. Everybody had, got the opportunity to weigh in. The planning commission, they were invited, place design task force, they were invited. Even at the place design, design task force, I remember the last meeting, you know, they, they provided a very good recommendation, you know, after they finished reviewing it, they didn't have much opposition to that. Some of the comment they had were already addressed in the document, you know, because I remember the chair, Mike Stone King saying, well, I think everything is in there, you know, if you look at the way it's structured, if you click on, on a comment, it directs you to the page where that particular issue is addressed, you know. So if there is this additional committee engagement process, I'm not sure, you know, how much additional changes that's going to result, that's going to come up as a result of that, but we can go ahead, if council approves the sixty-six thousand dollars, we go ahead and arrange the community engagement process and then see what comes out of it.
Let me say something. Well, first, I, I remember the very, a very big issue was the fact that the draft standards and design manual had basically made every street no, that couldn't, that, all the local streets, which were, are seventy percent of the, the street footage in the city, there the streets that work policy identified those as the smaller streets, the slower streets, the neighborhood streets, that were not anywhere near the purview of streets that work, but it was leaving it open and flexible to allow for those to still be built depending on the circumstances. What the standards and design manual draft that everyone saw did is made the very smallest arterial collector street become a local street, which was widening all the streets in our neighborhoods. And that was something that you had everyone from the Bike Ped community, the housing affordability community getting concerned that we were spending a lot of our land area on roads and that you were widening roads in order to make cars go faster and make it harder for people to cross without getting hurt. So there is a real, very big concern that staff and the consultant was recommending that our local streets all become basically framework streets, the bigger streets, and that's not something that was ever embedded in the streets that work policy, and that was born out of the community process that was about a two-year process, and that was tested by tool. Tool design was part of the team. So I, I think it's really important that we continue getting this feedback.
But do we need to spend another sixty-six thousand dollars?
Well, I don't know why they're saying it's costing that much, because I thought it was just the planning commission council work session.
Well, well, staff was following the directive from the city council, you know, to talk with the consultants and estimate how much it's going to cost to undertake the additional committee engagement. And the staff reports that you have before you includes that estimate, you know, to have that committee engagement and finalize the, the document, you know, and that's what you have, but if.
So that's if the consultant is involved.
Yeah, well, consultant, we have to evaluate. I think it's, it's, it's important for the consultant to help in terms of facilitating that particular discussion.
But instead of maybe community, this more extensive community engagement process, I think getting in the room with those, what do you think, individuals who had, like Place cadre, who had sent in the concerns, because we're only talking about a few individuals, right, to see if a work session resolved this versus this amount.
Well, the planning commission and the council needs to have a work session together.
But I think that needs to be the fault, I think, to follow these other groups, because that's what happened the last time we got in front of us, and there was just clearly some oversight in terms of some feedback. And Ms. Galvin, you even had your own feedback that I think you had some frustration about that was shared, not being considered.
Alex, because it's not included with the memo, can you give council some description of how many additional consultant hours would be purchased with this?
I, I, you know, I have to go and, I can't provide that this night, but I can, we can go back and size up, estimate that and break it out and then provide council that information.
It would appear, right, when you do the math, even at two or three hundred dollars now, this is hundreds of hours more work projected by them.
Preparation, traveling.
Yeah, I'd like, like to know where, why.
This is not, you know, a facilitated meeting between council and planning commission or cadre. This is, this is a deep dive all over.
Yeah, and then after they finish that, they have to go back and they revise.
They have to revise the manual, yeah.
No, I, I mean, when they came and spoke, yeah, I recognize that there's a whole revision process after that. And I also know that we have the main staff person working on this is now totally in another part of the organization, and so I'm not even clear on what his role.
Oh, Anna Ponzi?
No, 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 Marty.
But we could do this community engagement process and get the same feedback we've already received, right, because the comments were that whether it could be incorporated or not. So I think we could address those concerns because it was just a few groups that, from what I remember, that had these major concerns.
Well, I guess the question is, is that we need to get an explanation as to why it's sixty-six thousand dollars. That's all.
Totally helpful.
I mean, is it, is part of it to incorporate the changes or a part of it is, or is it all of it to do community engagement? And that's a really valid question, because it, because I don't know why it would cost that much to just do a few more.
But I think they were, from what is in the materials, is doing a more extensive community engagement process than going back to those groups that submitted those changes and just.
And I don't think we require that.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to get anything more from that. I think we need to be focused on these targeted groups. I'm just, I mean, is it just that those groups' feedback were so robust that that is kind of moving the needle? I don't, I don't know. I don't think we're looking at a community-wide engagement. We've been down that path.
But I think we also need to be open, like if there are things that can't be incorporated, they've spent sixty-six thousand or no dollars is not going to change that.
Prove that a little bit more too, because as a city, we have control over our roads. A county is very dependent on VDOT for, for a lot of its road maintenance.
We're getting a lot of money for maintenance.
Yeah, but, but I, I really want to, I would like to kind of see where that is, because otherwise it means that we can't, we, we're getting maintenance money now as it is for our existing roads, and they're very small and narrow. So I'm, I'm not sure why we couldn't have allowed some new roads in, in neighborhoods to be, to be like our existing neighborhood streets.
I'm not sure we are, you know, you know, the, the city's really don't have any more space to grow in terms of building roads.
Well, we're putting in, even the redevelopment of Friendship Court is putting in new roads. When we're dealing with our big blocks and breaking them down, there are new streets.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's correct, you know, but I think Friendship Court was a design with a street that walk concentration.
And even they, they were trying to push it smaller and smaller and smaller, skinnier so that it wasn't such a fast street. So anyway, I just, we're getting into the details here, but I just, I don't think we're ready to close the door on saying that we cannot open up opportunities to have different kinds of local street designs.
So would we be open to scheduling the work session?
I don't think we can schedule a council and planning commission work session until these other groups have had a chance to weigh in. That was the whole problem we had before.
Well, if we had the group with the session with the other groups.
I don't know that us being at the table, I mean, is going to be that valuable.
Well, one reason I think it is valuable, because I think we need to hear part of the discussion about whether things can be incorporated or not, and if there is disagreement on that, because some of that is what I heard previously, is, you know, staff thinking one thing and some of the other groups thinking another. So it, I don't think putting, what do you think?
I think it would be critical, since it wasn't in the memo, and I'm sorry for that, to say to you all, this is what the sixty-six thousand dollars is going to buy, okay? And you can see how much of that is the actual manual revision versus this additional engagement, and that would be very instructive. I, I think that, you know, in great part, it was just cadre coming forth and saying, look, these were our comments and staff saying, I think, to you at that time, hey, this was a long road and this was eleventh hour. That, that's how I heard the meeting at that time, basically, what was the timing of their comments based on all the different periods or the length of the period of the potential comment? That said, you know, we want to hear their comments, and I hear Ms. Galvin really focused on the streets and, and then, but in great part, the manual is also driving other things like the underground infrastructure.
Sure.
And some standards that we need to put out there for folks, and I, I could give you some examples about that, but I think it would be too much in the weeds. I, I think the, you know, this is certainly really needed to move forward, and we want to advance that. We can put it on the active agenda if you like, or we could put it on consent with a really explicit description of what the sixty-six thousand is proposed for, but ultimately it seems like we will need to reconcile at least all of the cadre comments with what the draft was and ultimately figure out how much of the money is for the manual revision and the joint work session with the planning commission.
So those.
Those are the basic core elements in my estimation.
Okay. So could you do that before it's on the agenda, back on the agenda, have those conversations? Because that might free up some of the, the money that is asking to be allocated. If it's just those, if staff can have that conversation to say, this is why, yes, it's now incorporated, so this is what the revision will look like, right? And so then the consultant would know if it's something that has been able to be reconciled and just needs to be changed in the manual versus whether, and then we would know whether those things could be changed versus starting a more extensive engagement that would just amount to the same recommendations.
And so to be clear, instead of coming back on March fourth, ask staff to figure out prior to engaging with the consultant, how we would incorporate in, for example, all of the cadre comments.
If they could be.
If it's possible.
Possible.
And to avoid the consultant costs and then come back from there.
Yeah, but not just to incorporate, but just to let us know if it's possible to incorporate or not.
Sure, like I, I do want to still see that itemization of the sixty-six thousand, just in the event that there are things that we would see on that itemized list that, oh, that really does make sense, and just hadn't thought of it. And at the same time, if then, based on the mayor's comments, as I'm hearing it, then staff's recommendations on where things could be cut, because staff could either do it or it's not, not essential or.
It's not going to get us anywhere.
It was not going to, yeah, so I think it would be like, yeah, itemize it sixty-six thousand, but then what are the things that are really kind of would be nice but not necessary?
But I also want to go back to the conversations. I feel like it was more than just cadre, because even this week we got Bike Ped, wasn't that about this, the design manual? I've read so many emails.
The bicycle pedestrian advisory committee are still writing stuff.
I don't know, was it just reinforcing things they felt like weren't considered before?
Yeah, I think they were. What they were reinforcing, because I was at the place design task force meeting when they came, the place design task force for endorsement, they wanted the place to endorse those concerns. Those concerns were adequately evaluated, because they noted that at the meeting. It was adequately evaluated. Some of them were integrated, but some of them weren't. So the ones that were not integrated, so they wanted reconsideration. So I'm not sure whether we have another meeting that that's going to be integrated, because those, they receive adequate explanation clearly on why those should not be part of the standards and design manual. So they're just requesting for reconsideration of something that has already been considered before.
But I do think there's value in a conversation versus some of this back and forth.
Yeah, I think.
A discussion with these groups.
You know, the idea of having, and just kind of how we've done the work sessions in the past, we have members of the community come and explain to us their view and their position. Maybe we need to hear directly from members of the Bike Ped and cadre, what is their big concern? And that would be part of the work session, and maybe it could be crafted in a way so that it's a planning commission council workshop session, I'm just thinking out loud here, but I'm thinking how we did the Second Chance City, how we did the, some of the other work sessions, where then we had people come and give us their testimony about what they feel, so that it was a blend of a community process, but also a time for the planning commission council to work.
But as long as we're not asking staff to force anything that can't be done.
Well, but we, but it's, we're, we're getting into a contest, and so we just want to hear, what is it?
And that's why I would rather us proceed the council and planning commission discussion with an opportunity for staff to meet with these groups and discuss this, to hammer this out before they come to us, and then we get the highlights. Great, if there's something that, but I, I just think that we're missing a connection here, and, and I do hear, I do know that cadre's, I understand that timeline, and I remember at the time though, understanding that they really had been communicating and were working through, and that it just, it took a period of time just to kind of be able to assemble themselves in a way, in an organized way to get that feedback, and I think that everyone was just surprised, they didn't realize that we were so close to basically coming in front of council with what they would consider to final, and so.
And they didn't know that they weren't going to get another document to look at based on their previous comments, and the fact that was a common comment.
Right, and you shared about.
Yeah, me, I, I was surprised too, so.
Okay.
I, so how we're living it is staff will get together with these other groups, and then we're going to get staff to give us an itemized list of what the sixty-six thousand means.
And an update from those conversations.
And an update from those conversations and.
But no force changes if they don't fit.
Of course, no, nothing.
All right, thank you.
I'm tired.
I know.
That was a nice thirty minute.
All right, so any other business? Thank you. No? Okay, so now we're open up our last matters by the public. Are there any, does anyone wish to speak? No? All right.
Great.
So meetings are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.